Good evening and welcome to the May 11th, 2022 School Committee Meeting. The School Committee has just returned from Executive Session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, Jesus, every time, every time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item of business is the Winter Athletic Department Highlights. Mia Musio, do you know you were first?
Um, I did, but I've been outside at lacrosse for two hours, so.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having me. Um, I will try not to ramble too much, but we did have a lot of stuff going on in the winter. Um, at the top, you'll see all of our participation numbers for each one of our sports. Uh, I'll start off with boys basketball. Um, just a few things, this year was our first winning season since 2011. Um, and we had a thousand-point scorer, Tommy Mallinson. Um, he also set a few records with regards to, um, three-pointers. Uh, and I'm not going to go through each one of the numbers, uh, but he had a really great season. He was also named a Boston Global Scholastic. Um, so we were, we ended our season 11 and 10, which, um, if everyone has seen our, our records over the past couple of years, um, this was a, a really successful season for us and we did go into the first round of the tournament as well. Girls' basketball, um, and for each one of these, there's our, our, I should have said this to begin with, our coaching staff, our varsity record, and then just some, some highlights from the season. Uh, girls' basketball, uh, we did go six and 14, but, but coming off of a season where we did lose a lot of seniors, so, uh, lots of young kids on the team. Um, Olivia Spazucco was a league All-Star as well as a, she was on the All-Academic Team and she was our team MVP. Uh, Coach's Award went to Rita Roche and we actually did, um, host a girls' basketball Christmas tournament here, which we did win. Wrestling, Pete Mitchell, he was our fir-, he was a first-year, uh, head coach here. Um, and our varsity record doesn't necessarily show, um, kind of the grit of this particular team. We had two kids go, um, pretty deep into the wrestling tournament, which is a, which is an individual tournament. So there are sectionals and states and then New England's. Julianne Shella also was a league All-Star and All-Conference as a sophomore. Um, gymnastics is the big one. Our first year with our gymnastics co-op, we went seven and one. Um, and it was pretty amazing. We finished third at States. Uh, it was a really well-meshed program with Bedford, lots of talented kids. Um, amazing to watch them. They really all fit very well together, um, and super competitive, uh, as you can see by our record. Uh, we have a couple who, who, a couple of kids who, um, received some state honors as well. So Emily Provost and Alexa Graziano were not only league All-Stars, All-Conference, but they were also named Boston Herald All-Scholastics and what's missing on here is Boston Global Scholastics as well. Uh, so a lot of talent and continued talent. Um, we're only losing one senior, so, uh, next year should be very interesting for that group. Cheer, um, I did just notice that I missed a couple of things for cheer, but, uh, our cheer team always super-successful, really competitive. Uh, they were third at New England's and they were runner-up at, um, States and we were the Winter Middle-Sex League Champions. So, um, lots of really great things and I'll talk about one of those girls, um, when we talk about college stuff. Girls' hockey, we went nine, 12, and one. Um, our league All-Stars were Lily McKenzie and Maddie Sanato. We went to the second round of the State Tournament with an upset, um, against Tewksbury. Uh, just a, a really solid group of kids, um, and the co-op continues to work really well and I think it will work well again for next year, numbers-wise.
Great.
Um, boys' hockey, we won the Hayrow Christmas Tournament. Uh, we also went to the State Tournament as well. Uh, we did lose to Newport, but tough, gritty team. Um, and just a couple of the kids, Liam Crowley was an All-Star, Nathan Alberdi was the team MVP, um, and he will be a captain for next year and the Coach's Award went to Ethan Murphy. Um, girls' indoor track, could take me a while. Um, they are a really talented bunch. I'm not going to read off all of their names. Um, we had them in here before. They are amazing group of kids. They had an undefeated season. They were the Middle-Sex League Freedom Champs. Um, State Force, Division Four State Relay Runner-Up, Division Four State Meet Runner-Up, and, uh, Celia Kulis, who you all met, was, uh, a State Champion for the hurdles. So, just a really all-around amazing group of kids. They're very talented. They just won the Freedom Division as of yesterday for the spring, which I know we're talking about winter, but, um, they're also undefeated season, five and oh, so, uh, really solid group of kids. Uh, boys' indoor track, uh, our league All-Stars were Jayandre Abel, John Ware and Jack Malanson. Um, Jayandre also had the team MVP. John Ware was our Coach's Award and our Frank Kelly Award went, also went to Jack Malanson. So, um, great group of kids. Um, we've had, uh, some additions to the coaching staff as well, so it, um, our, our track kids are, are doing very well. Um, swim, which we co-op with North Rudding, also a really talented group of kids. Um, we do function in the, or not, we compete in the KPN League, so some of these things are a little bit different, but there, Ethan Ryan was our first-team KPN League All-Star. Um, and he was also the team MVP. Uh, and then we have our second-team All-Stars, um, Spencer Bectas and Dot Tran and Tyler Sheehan. Um, and just another solid group of kids. Ethan Ryan went on to, um, I, I believe, uh, 13th, um, at States, so he, he is very successful swimmer and he is coming back for next year, so.
Great.
Um, our Student Athletes of the Month, I'd just like to recognize these kids. For December, it was Olivia Spazucco, uh, and Jayandre Abel. January was Ali Ganley and Liam Crowley, Lily Mc-, uh, February was Lily McKenzie and Willie Stewart. Um, and March, I know, was more towards the spring, but we've gotten a little far away. So, um, March was Celia Kulis and Nathan Alberdi. Um, we have a lot of kids going on to play college sports as of right now and I think that is going to increase, uh, but I just wanted to go through a few of them. Gavin Erickson, um, is going to play Division Two Lacrosse at Seton Hall. Celia Kulis is going, uh, and we did all the track, all the girls', all our Division One Girls' Track kids earlier, but Celia Kulis is, uh, going to the College of Holy Cross for Track and Field. Caitlin McGuire is going to St. Thomas Aquinas to play Division Two Women's Soccer. Amanda Broussard, Division One Track and Field at Bryant. Angelina, and I always apologize to her for her last name, for my lack of pronunciation. Uh, Zaykov, Zaykovskaia, um, she's going to Merrimack College for Track and Field, which is a Division One program. Olivia Earler is going to Merrimack as well for Division One Cross-Country Track and Field. Shay Cushing, um, is going to University of Vermont for, to, to run Division One Cross-Country and Track and Field. Jake Chiricello is going to play Division Two Football at Franklin Pierce University. Pedro Germano is going to Curry College for Division Three Football. Tommy Mallinson, Worcester State University, Division Three Men's Basketball. Marcello Mizuraka, Norwich University, Division Three Football. John Germano, University of New England for Division Three Football. Um, and just our latest addition was Emerson Forsyth. She is going to cheer at UMass, which is a Division One program. Um, and I had one more highlight, our Student Ambassador Winter Huddle. Um, we have three students, Anaye Gandhi, Joey Coleman, and, um, Audrey Cardo, who have been participating as our MIAA Student Ambassadors. They meet, um, three times a year, uh, in different huddles and with other students from MIAA schools, um, and I'm hoping to continue that and nominate some students for next year.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
All good news, Mia. Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments?
Sure. You know, I can't let the moment pass, right?
It's okay, you can.
I know. I have to, I have to say that, um, I'm just so impressed and so happy to see that the, the co-ops, the co-ops reinvigorating our teams, um, as well as giving more of a diversity with, um, the social circles our students, um, participate with.
Yeah.
And I think that's fantastic and I'm especially, uh, happy to see gymnastics, you know, and swim continuing to, uh, increase in numbers and successes and interest. And I think, I think that is one of the most important things about our athletic department, um, is, is the, the ability to collaborate with other districts, to, to give our students, um, the best competition and challenges and in becoming a broader team and, um, to find their successes through, um, the sports that they've chosen. And I, I couldn't be more happier, um, in their successes and in the failures, because with their failures, failures will come successes, you know? And, um, I think they're all spectacular and I'm just so proud of, of the department and the, the teams and the kids and it's fabulous. I, I'm sorry, I just have to.
Love it, MJ, thank you.
My two cents.
Um, and thank you to the coaches.
Yes.
They do an amazing job.
Absolutely.
Really grateful. Lots of dedication and lots of time, um, and they really do care about the kids a lot.
I did, um, just looking at the swim, I didn't notice that the girls swim.
So it's a, it's a co-ed team.
Oh.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you.
But I, yeah, no, no worries. It, it swim functions very differently, um, in certain schools and so some do boys in the winter and girls in the fall. Um, North Rudding does a co-ed team, everything in the wintertime.
Okay.
Mia, is this, um, seems like a very high number of students going with ath-, you know, just do athletics in college. Is this normal for us or is this sort of a, an outlier?
Um, the number of Division One athletes is a lot and I know that's a lot of girls' track, so, um, but it, that's a, it's a really significant number. Um, I would say, you know, no, I, I would say that this is a, a good, solid number, probably more so than we've had in the past couple of years. Um, but I also think students are also going to find their way in Division Three programs, um, because there are required deadlines for Division One and Division Two to sign your National Letter of Intent. Um, so I really think we will find some more too. Um, and, and just in doing research on past students from Wilmington who are competing at the college level, um, we, we have a really solid amount of kids who go to the next level. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, just one question. We, we've talked before about, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've, I think, used the word sort of a wider trend that is being seen around co-op programs for districts. True? Can you maybe expand upon a little bit of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, um, there are certain sports that are across the board within high school athletics where numbers are just decreasing. Um, you will see lots of girls' hockey co-ops. It's just what is happening. Um, there are teams that have, some even have three co-ops, or three schools within their girls' hockey co-op. So I do, I think that the numbers are, are in a decline for that particular sport. Um, you know, we talk about swim, uh, pool time is almost impossible and we're, to a point where schools are, can't host a program because they can't, their kids can't swim. So, um, I think, like you said, it's really great that we're able to do those things and provide students with an opportunity to swim. Um, but I do, the, sports like boys' lacrosse, girls' hockey, swim, um, even gymnastics, it's, it's hard, it's, it is hard for schools to have a full program without the support of a co-op. Uh, just whether it has to do with club sports or a lack of interest in those programs or, you know, in this case, a newer program that's just been established, um, I think that co-ops are going to be the answer for a lot of schools, um, in order to make sure that we are able to kind of maintain the amount of offerings that we have.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mia. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Ragsdale.
Uh, so we have one person signed up for a public comment tonight, Jeffrey Cohen.
Good evening. Jeffrey Cohen, 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. Wilmington schools have allowed radical concepts that have no place in education to become a core component of, of curriculum. The initiatives of so-called Diversity Equity Inclusion, DEI, provide zero educational benefit to students. It should come as no surprise that Wilmington residents, that these radical concepts don't even have measurable goals to determine progress, and I believe that to be intentional. A recent public records request proves that our schools have no intention of achieving any goals in DEI. To measure progress towards goals, good business practice requires that all goals must be definitive and measurable. None of these initiatives have any measurable goals, benchmarks, tools, or even timelines to achieve these goals. It appears that some large government grants are tied to our schools, schools implementing these twisted initiatives. Why are we accepting grants if they don't improve, excuse me, if they don't benefit students or improve the curriculum? This committee is also actively participating in introduct-, introducing radical gender ideology in our schools. There are books in elementary school libraries that promote this nonsense. In addition, there was a recent quote-unquote wellness fair sponsored by the Wilmington Education Foundation and attended by most of this committee. Some of the vendors included Gilson, the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network, Nagley, the North Shore Alliance of Gay Lesbian Bisexual and Trans Youth Organization, and GSA, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. Why are our schools promoting this gender ideology in our schools? Who gave you permission to do so? Issues of gender and race will continue to be the sole responsibility of parents, not government education. Most Wilmington parents want schools to focus exclusively on course curriculum subjects like math, science, English, and social studies, nothing else. Does this committee expect to have an opt-out clause for the many parents, parents who are vehemently, who vehemently disagree with the promotion of this twisted gender ideology? Why can't you let kids just be kids instead of indoctrinating them? This committee has allowed our schools to drift off course for far too long. It's well past time to force our schools to focus on education, not on social activism. I would hope and expect that this committee will take immediate action to eliminate all radical ideology in our schools. If this committee is serious about improving student retention, which currently stinks, I suggest eliminating these divisive initiatives, which are significant contributors to student attrition. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
Great, thanks. Our next item of business, we have approval of items by consensus, and there's not much here. We have approval of minutes, April 27th, 2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? That's unanimous. And we have payroll ending 5/11/2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Smaha, seconded by Mr. Turner. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thanks, everyone. All right, our next item of business is the School Committee Reorganization and Subcommittee Assignments. I'm wondering if it's okay with the committee if we do the reorg now, but wait on the Subcommittee Assignments to the end of our meeting? Are we okay with that? Just so that, because we have, we do have some guests, so I thought it might be, are we ready? Okay. All right. Um, but we will do the School Committee Reorganization, so. We're looking for a chair. No. So I, I'll start by saying, I am, I'm sort of happy to stay as chair, but I'm willing to stay at, to remain your chair if no one else wants to step in. So, but if someone else is really eager to take on this role, then I'm happy to step aside. So I'll start with that.
I would like to nominate Jen Bryson for Chair. And, wait, wait a minute, I'm not done talking! Um, I, and I, I say that, um, in the sense that where we, where we are right now, especially, where we've been, where we are, I think it's especially essential, um, for the consistency and the leadership of this board in navigating the, um, the issues that are before us, whether it be the, the Wildwood School Building, um, contracts, you know, I, I, I just think that, um, that consistency is something that would be valuable, especially as where we sit as board members and board in general, so, um, so I nominate Jen Bryson.
Second.
No, actually Dave's supposed to. He'll take over.
Are there, are there any other nominations for Chair? All right, so then we'll do this as a roll call vote. So, Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
And Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Mr. Smaha?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Will you accept?
Um, that's weird.
I guess we should ask her if she accepts the nomination, but I guess you, you actually said you did it, so.
I think she first saw that. Uh, and Mr. Ragsdale is yes.
Good.
And I just want to thank you, Jen, for all of the, um, excellent, timely communication, not just, I think, with all of us, but with community members who reach out all the time and you always field those emails and that communication. I really appreciate your leadership and I'm very grateful that you're willing to do this again.
Your time and your commitment alone, and that's what I was trying to get out, but I didn't do it so successfully.
Thank you very much. Um, is there a nominee? Oh, yes.
I just wanted to note that the combination of knowledge and patience is phenomenal. So, thank you.
This is very interesting. I feel like I might wear a retirement.
Not yet.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, like I should make a speech, but I'm, I'm going to skip that and just say, is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Ragsdale for Chair, uh, Vice Chair.
One second. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? All right. Oh, sorry.
Uh, yes, I am willing to.
That's true. Good point. Good point, Mr. Fenely. All right, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Mr. Smaha?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Me? Yes. Yes? Okay. Um, everyone watching, this is very, this is super awkward for us, as you can tell. Um, all right, and we are looking for a secretary. Is there a nomination?
I'll nominate, um...
Uh, Mrs. Burns for... I will second that.
Nobody wants to take it on? I don't mind doing it. I'd be happy to, but I want diversity.
Can you clarify what's involved?
You have to show up to every School Committee meeting. Sometimes you are obligated to take minutes when Tracy, um, can't participate. That's about it. And you sign the minutes of the meetings. It's really involved.
And you take care of correspondence?
I do. That's true. Yeah.
Are you happy to serve?
I'm happy to, but I don't want to, I don't, I don't want it to be long, you know, longevity that it's expected or anticipated, but so I, you know what I mean? I just, I'm certainly happy to, but I just, I, I certainly don't want, you know, uh-huh, to, you know, overstep somebody who may be interested, because I think it's just as important to be, you know what I mean? So.
Is anyone else interested in serving as secretary?
Not if MJ is fine doing it.
Okay. All right, so we have a first, we have a second. I think we have a first and a second. All right, um, Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mrs. Plowman?
Yes.
Mr. Smaha?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Sure.
And I'm a yes. All right, well, that was relatively simple. Thank you all. I mean, it's, it is, it's, it's good work.
Thank you.
And it's a pleasure and, and I feel, I mean, I'm just trying to keep us moving in the right direction and I, and I feel like we all are such, we're all really doing equal work. It's just keeping things moving along and I'm happy to sit in the seat and, and help you do that, but I think anybody would be a fabulous chair, so, but I thank you.
I also want to express my gratitude for all the, all the work that you do and, um, I hope that the families in this town, um, have, you know, an inkling of how much work and time and attention and thought, um, that you put into, uh, this work and this committee and the school system.
Thank you. And that goes to all of you. And I don't think anyone can truly appreciate the work until they've sat in these seats. Um, and the work does not just begin and end in this particular meeting, as Mr. Turner has quickly learned. He's like, yes, I can speak to that, but we, really, I mean, all of the committees and stepping in for, I mean, there is just so many meetings and so many negotiations, so many things happening and people are just so willing. I was here last night for the Strings Concert and we were, some of us were here watching our own children and I happened to run into Mrs. Plowman on her way to another meeting for this, I mean, it's, it is truly, um, inspiring to be surrounded by people who just give and give and give. So, so thank you for, for making this work so incredibly valuable and, and important. Thank you.
But people should understand that the Chair is a special focal point. Of all this, of all this work, it's like, yeah, fair, fair enough, you know, we, we all work, work hard, but there's, you know, the, being the focal point of the email and the phone calls and, uh, communication and it's, there's, there's a level beyond, there's a level beyond, um, just kind of like the ordinary School Committee work.
But it's, it's vital, though, true leadership leads by example, but also collaborates and listens to the body as a whole, and I think, that's vital.
And connecting with other, connecting with other leadership in town and with other boards and communications with the Select Board and there's, there's...
Who is this person you're talking about? Can you write me a recommendation? Thank you. Okay.
And David, you're always the, you know, immediate support to that, so, really, thank you for your...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so you don't like it? I'm going to start gushing about, no, okay, so we're going to move on.
Do you ever experience anything quite like this with a secretary?
I had quite a moment. That's great.
Wait, this isn't normal. This is not normal. And what's so interesting is, I think people watching us would think we're all like, we all agree with one another, which we don't, which is so funny, that we can so respectfully disagree and have difference of opinions and, and actually not be on the same side of certain, and still be respectful and, and understanding about that with one another. And I think that's what makes this committee work so well, is because we're really, I think, focused on, on the, the children and doing the right thing and, and talking about our opinions in really respectful, thoughtful ways. So I appreciate all the time and work that you all put into this, um, as I know Central Office does as well, so, so thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, now we're moving on. That's, um, item seven, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. Uh, and, uh, just to sort of, as this is the official kickoff, kickoff of the, the next term for this committee, we look forward, uh, to working, uh, in partnership with you. You've been a, a great partner through some, obviously, some very, very difficult and challenging times, last two-plus years, and we have a lot of important work to do and, um, uh, we look forward to working collaboratively with you on that. Uh, there are a number of items in the packet, just a really quick, um, brief ones tonight, but just to draw to your attention, too. First off, um, there is a list of colleges that, uh, the high school, Wilmington High School grads are attending. It dawned upon some of us recently, myself included, that perhaps unless you are attending the graduation, uh, if you have a senior or know somebody, that we may not, as a school system, uh, publicize enough of the, um, and give credit to, uh, where our school, where our students are going. And so, consistent with the efforts to try and bring, uh, more attention to, it's, there's so many terrific and amazing things happening and accomplishments of, uh, students of Wilmington, uh, this is one of those efforts. And we're going to work to try and actually publish with, uh, Ms. Ingersoll's help, try and publicize something that, um, speaks to this. But, uh, so pleased to be able to share with you that our 2022 graduating class, they were accepted to 173, uh, schools throughout the country, uh, and collectively, at this point anyway, have chosen to attend, uh, 73 schools. And the listing of those schools, uh, not who's going where, but a listing of those schools are listed, uh, here in the packet. Also, uh, won't draw attention to it, but in the packet is a list of those that are going on to college, uh, with an athletic scholarship and, um, Ms. Musio, uh, spoke, uh, spoke to that obviously earlier. Um, so, we look forward to a lot of celebrations in the next, uh, couple of weeks related to our graduates and of course, um, graduation coming up very, very soon. Uh, just a copy of the Teacher Staff Appreciation Week message that went out, uh, from my office a short, uh, time ago. A lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, national celebration days and certainly, uh, paying tribute to educators today is, uh, National School Nurse Day, um, and, um, so a lot of, uh, recognition and very, very well deserved for, for our tremendous staff throughout all of our eight schools in our district. Item 7C, the North Intermediate Principal Announcement. There is a copy of the, uh, the press release. Uh, as you know, we just recently wrapped up the North Intermediate Principal Search Um, and, uh, this information has already gone out to the North parents and staff, um, uh, and, and the North community. But just, if I may, to take an opportunity to, uh, formally welcome, Miss, uh, Dr. Diane Carrera. She is currently, uh, the principal, uh, at the Fuller Metal School in Middleton, Massachusetts. She has been in that role for the past 12 years. She has over 25 years of public education experience, having served as a teacher and a math and curriculum, uh, and instructional specialist, uh, predominantly or exclusively, rather, as an educational leader at the elementary level. Uh, and we are so thrilled to, uh, prepare to welcome her, um, as we continue to make our way through a number of retirements. Uh, again, for those members of the community watching, we've, we have, uh, we're preparing to say goodbye to three principals who have chosen to retire at the end of the school year. Uh, we are in the midst of, um, the Woburn Search Committee. Uh, they met last night and are moving forward with interviews next week.
Tuesday, Wednesday?
Tuesday, okay, great. Um, update on enrollment. In your packet, there is a, a brief update, um, on this. It just seemed timely to do so. We spent a lot of time on this. Um, these are unofficial numbers, again, just to draw attention to the fact that really, when we speak about enrollment, we always draw back to the October 1st enrollment report that is our official certified enrollment, um, on file with the Department of Education. But some things to point out to you at this point in the year, and we're getting towards the end, but still a little ways to go. We have seen a net increase of 22 students pre-K through, uh, 11th grade, uh, in the district. So 22 students, in other words, that we did not have, um, on our, uh, on our docket or, or in our rolls, so to speak, um, at the, uh, at the, as of the October 1st date. Uh, and you can see the breakdown of those students by grade level, so I thought that that was important information to share with you. Uh, the second category is that of, um, obviously carefully tracking eighth to ninth grade enrollment. Obviously a source of, uh, considerable discussion over time. These, um, these are not finalized numbers, but they're, they're getting closer, and I think to draw attention to a couple of, um, a, a, a couple of areas. So the current eighth grade class, as you can see in the memo, is a total of 258 students. That's how many students at the eighth grade that sit in our middle school right now. Uh, 85 were accepted to the Shawshin Technical School. There are, uh, I'm told 15 that are on the waiting list there. Um, so it is possible that some more students from our, uh, eighth grade class, uh, move on to Shawshin Tech, but it's uncertain at this point in time exactly how many will. Uh, accepted to private schools right now, we are understanding that's seven. Um, I don't have the actual number that, uh, would map or mirror that to this year, but I'm almost certain that that number has dropped. Um, I think we were in the teens, I, if I, if I'm not mistaken, we can certainly provide that, um, in greater detail in the future. But seven students have been accepted to private schools, uh, and, uh, three, uh, are on waitlist for private schools. All of this data is compiled and carefully attended to from our, um, our school counselors here in the high school, so. Um, and just below that, a- again, as a source of obviously a lot of attention and interest, how does that, if, if these are our numbers for eighth to ninth grade, um, what does that look like for retention rate, and how does that compare to recent years? Um, and so in the second part of that memo, you can see a little bit of data to that point. It's hard to pinpoint exactly what our retention rate right now will be. Obviously, there's some possible fluctuation, but it appears like it will be somewhere between 57 to 64 percent. Um, and so you can see, uh, historically, going back a number of years, what that retention rate has looked like. And, um, uh, we've obviously talked, uh, to some degree about that. And then the averages down below the various fiscal years. So, um, there's no question that we are, uh, on course to be retaining a higher number of students than this year. Um, that there's no question of, depending on where we fall out, it's very possible that we will mirror two years ago. Um, and so we'll continue to keep, obviously, the committee well informed of that. Uh, Special Olympics, I just wanted to take this opportunity and, um, uh, extend, uh, a tremendous thanks to all of our parent volunteers, uh, our community volunteers, um, Diana Hill, uh, Michelle Taglerino here from the high school. Uh, a rather chilly windy day on Monday, but, um, the sun was shining, and it was a tremendous event, again, um, outside here, uh, of the high school. This is the fourth, uh, the fourth annual, uh, Special Olympics. Uh, we had three going strong, and then unfortunately, obviously interrupted with COVID-19. Uh, this year, though, my understanding is this was the first, um, uh, opportunity in which we had another district join us. It has been Burlington, but Bill Ricka sent some students this year, and so, uh, a great, great special day, uh, indeed, out there. Um, and, uh, finally, um, just wanted to, not on the, uh, not on the agenda, but just, uh, to extend, uh, to extend my thanks to the many, many, uh, community partners also who were a part of the Wellness Fair that was, uh, held here last week. Um, i- if you had a chance to, to, to join, uh, it was great to aid, of course, to be back in person, but B, to see so many, um, community entities who were there. Uh, many, many thanks goes to WEF, but also Riverside Community Care, uh, Wilmington Memorial Library, Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition, Samaritans of Merrimack Valley, uh, Carisolus, Wilmington Recreation, the Wilmington Special Education Parent Advisory Council, Council, and the Wilmington Family Counseling Services, just to name a few. So, uh, a great event, and, um, thank you to all of those who served on the, uh, Behavioral Health Task Force this year to make that possible. And with that, that's my report for tonight.
Great, thank you. Questions or comments about the report? Mr. Ragsdale?
I just wanted to say that as we welcome Diane Carrero to our community, that we're also saying goodbye, uh, to Christine McMenamin. And, uh, and I wanted to acknowledge her many years of wonderful service to Wilmington, and, uh, express my gratitude for, uh, for everything that she's done for the kids of the North and before that, the middle school and, uh, and so long. And that, and I wish her great, great success and happiness, uh, in her retirement.
If I may, I should just say, we're, we're very much, uh, looking forward to and hopeful that, uh, all of our retiring administrators and all of those retirees in general will be with us on June the 8th, um, to celebrate their, uh, their fine accomplishments here.
Thank you. Thanks, David.
Um, I just, uh, in terms of the teacher appreciation, I just want to extend my appreciation for, um, all the teachers, and really for all the staff, uh, in the Wilmington schools. I really, um, you know, they, it's been, it's been a long, you know, couple of years here, and finally feel like we're getting back to normal. So I really, I really appreciate all the work that they're doing.
I concur.
100%.
Lots of concurs. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right, our next item is the Middle School Program Review Update. So I was gonna switch this, but what do you think?
That's totally fine. I'm happy for that.
So should we, so I can move the, I'm so torn here. Do we move the Start Time Committee Survey Results now so that our presenters can present? I'm just trying to, in my head, gauge the amount of conversation around each of these. And I'm like, should we just bang out the middle school thing? No, probably not. What are you, no, we'll just switch it.
I'm happy to switch, sure.
Wait, Jen, what are you thinking? Oh, I thought you were telling me what you wanted. Okay. All right, we'll let them go first. Perfect. So we will, we'll skip over old business for just a bit, and we're gonna move into new business, which is the Start Time Committee Survey Results. And we have, um, Dr. Brand, and we have some PAWS representatives, and are you gonna come on down here? All right. You gonna pull it up? Thank you for being here, and thank you for your very informative video. Walk us through that. I appreciated that at the baseball field. Awesome.
Mike, do you wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. Hey, uh, my name's Mike Mercaldi. Uh, I've been in Wilmington for a few years. I have two girls, a fourth grader at the North and a first grader at Woburn Street School. So nice to meet you all, and, um, thanks for having us tonight. So should be a good talk.
Um, the, the presentation seems to be advancing on its...
Oh, my paper. Bag it up, bag it up. And I'm, um, Jen Benelli, also a part of the PAWS planning team. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I do wanna say on behalf of PAWS, uh, you know, a thank you. Um, for those that are not aware of our group, we, we started this year to really try to increase two-way communication between the district and parents, and really aim to, uh, increase parent and understanding and engagement, um, and district initiatives. And this, this opportunity really fit the bill, um, in turning, in, in terms of us, um, getting involved. And, um, I will go off my memory on the, um, I don't know if we wanna talk about background of, of this initiative. Um, overall, for parents who haven't been as tuned in, but I guess just a couple of words, um, for those who haven't heard much about this. It did start really with under the desire to, um, better align our Wilmington's start, start times with those of, um, what we, research has found to be best for adolescent, adolescent students, um, and also better align with the Middle Sex, Middle Sex District League, um, overall. And if people are curious about that research and better understanding, like, the circadian rhythms and, and all that good stuff, it is on the website, um, and districts, and then school start time change, um, you'll find a bunch of materials there. Um, and then the other thing is that this has been going on a long time. There was a school start time committee formed back in COVID, so that, that, that we're kind of coming in as PAWS at the tail end of this to help this, this portion, but there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people. Um, there were 14, you know, who collected all that research, developed 14-plus scenarios, and whittled it down to five that were presented earlier this year. Um, after our initial events, um, a PAWS event about to increase, uh, understanding about this initiative, there was, um, some feedback provided to Dr. Brand, and also he had some discussions with the Transportation Director that further refined it down to the three finalists that we took to parent test, testing. Um, overall, can I use this thing? Okay, um, and so then the objective of the survey, um, is to provide you all, the people at this table, the school committee, with the parent guardian input on those last three scenarios, to inform their decision on how and, and whether or how to move forward with any of these scenarios. So I think it's just important for parents to know that this is the parent input, not the decision. The decision will be among those at this table sometime soon. I also have an outline, um, of, uh, the survey and, and the goals of it, of those. Uh, we've talked about family composition to help with our analysis. We gathered some information about school ta- start time priorities in general, kind of agnostic to any of the scenarios. Um, gaining the, gathering the importance of different attributes and benefits of different start times, um, that you might see in the various scenarios. Then we did get parents' reaction to the proposed scenarios, re, um, evaluating each scenario in terms of, um, overall ease of adjusting to the scenario, perceived impact on, um, adolescent sleep, um, childcare, and after-school activities, which are kind of three of the key themes that emerged in our discussion with parents. Um, we also gathered the impact on each scenario on bus and cares, so we could get some insight into the logistical aspect of this. And we finally asked, um, their preference among the three. And then we had just a few ques-, uh, just a couple of questions to help with implementation, planning, and timing. Um, in terms of survey participation, um, I think this is pretty good participation. I don't know, 1,047 participants, it's cer- certainly statistically relevant. Um, it is, um, roughly representative of, um, age, and you see the survey participation side by side with current enrollment as of October 1st. You know, plus or minus 22 people or however many can, uh, joined. Um, on the right-hand side, you can see it's represented at roughly, uh, half and half in terms of side of town. Um, one area where it was a little bit different is we did see an over-representation of CARES parents. Um, makes sense, they're really in- involved. Childcare is a big deal here with school start time. Um, but it's something we kept in mind and, and took into account in our analysis. Um, here were the three start, uh, scenarios that were evaluated in kind of their summary form, or complete summary form. Um, for a quick reference, Scenario 1, everybody's 20 minutes later. Scenario 2 has the intermediate schools, the North and the West, starting at 7:30, and kind of splits the elementary. So Shawshin and Woburn are kind of the ones last starting. Um, Scenario 3, um, has the elementary schools starting at 7:30, um, and the high school starting latest with a seven, or excuse me, 8:40 start time and ending at 3:05. So, um, a quick, quick view, um, the preferred scenario overall. So Scenario 1, 20 minutes later, was preferred by more parents than Scenario 2 or 3. However, I think it's so important for people to recognize that there is no scenario that is preferred by the majority of parents, right? There's nothing that's gonna make everybody happy or even a majority of people happy. Um, I, we did highlight a few of the, um, reasons people selected this one. It seemed fair, um, the only, the only fair scenario that truly benefits all students. It allows more sti- sleep for all students while minimizing disruptions. It's the best of the three, however, it's still, um, middle school starts, uh, too early. It's the best possible scenario for family, um, with children in multiple schools. Um, some of the other proposed scenarios have too much of a gap in the starting and times. Um, also concern for childcare, you know, some sc- uh, Scenario 1 is a good compromise. Um, and then the last one, from a high school parent, um, if keeping the school's current scenario, schedule is not an option, Scenario 1 would be preferred. It would minimally impact time to get ready and the ability for my, um, oldest high school to make it to sport practices and work. And these are just a few of the examples. There is a lot of comments, um, all listed and connected, um, for you. And we picked these because they were representative of the larger themes and why this, um, seemed to do well. Okay, so the next one's a little bit of an eye chart, so I'll orient you in terms of how to read it. It is, of course, more complex than it needs to be because we have eight schools instead of fewer. Um, but the data that you saw on the previous slide is on the top row, right? So that sums to 100, that's the total view. And then you have the preference by each of the, um, eight schools individually. Um, the arrows on that, that, that chart indicate statistically significantly higher or lower than that total. And what you, um, you know, the key takeaway here is fewer west-side parents prefer Scenario 1, which is largely due to the Shawshin and West starting at 9:15 a.m. and ending at 3:20 in this scenario. Um, on the right-hand side, some of the key concerns for, for those parents, and then parents in general, um, when it came to Scenario 1, it would make it very difficult for any children on the west side of town to have after-school a- activities. Um, West late start would be very inconvenient for working parents. I can't get to work in time. My company may fire me if it's not timely. Um, there were also concerns, again, that the middle school and high school time is still too early. There is a lot more data, and in fact, it is, um, for, for parents who might be tuning in the packets on, again, on the district website, um, does have all the, the detailed, um, charts and, and data behind these summaries that I'm gonna go through today. Um, we can also, of course, um, reference any of those for the school committee if you have any questions. But I'll just, you know, highlight, hit the summaries here and the implications. Um, so this first slide is all about the parent priorities and what they found important. So regardless of child's age, families prioritize school tart times that align with research on what is best for learning and well-being for the middle school and high school students. Start times that avoid young children waiting for the bus in the early morning, and high school end times that allow for after-school activities. Again, these are top priorities and top priorities that we saw across different age cohorts, or, um, again, um, which is actually, um, pretty interesting. And then there were also some kind of more grade-specific priorities that were, that were at the top of the list. Um, of course, for parents of pre-K to fifth grade, CARES availability and also cost comparable and, you know, roughly comparable to today, um, is a priority, as well as dropping off and pick up, picking up students in two-plus schools. And then for high school parents, end times that allow the high school students to work and to help have sufficient buses, uh, for athletics. Not really important to the younger people, but once you get into that grade, uh, that level, you realize the importance of these aspects. So why do we care about this? Um, two, two key things. One is while there are many factors in play, I think we tested like over 13, um, you know, these family priorities should hold greater weight in the school committee's evaluation of school start times. Um, in addition, you know, understanding these top priorities provides in tot- insight into parents' reactions to the proposed scenario. So Scenario 2, which is kind of the latest start time for middle school parents, but it's a challenge for high school, uh, after-school activities. It has young children waiting at the bus too early, and then has an impact to the CARES program. Scenario 2, again, has young children waiting for the bus, um, too early. It does spread out, um, drop-off and pickup times in the pre-K through fifth, and, and has some limitations in terms of, uh, half, high school after-school without that meaningful imp- as meaningful impact to the middle school start times. Um, in addition, we asked a question about what is, do you believe to be the earliest acceptable start time, um, for each grade, uh, cohort? And what we saw was for most parents, 8 a.m. is the earliest acceptable start time, regardless of the child's grade level. Less than a quarter of parents, uh, feel 9:30 a.m. or earlier is acceptable for any grade and even fewer in that elementary cohort, um, for the kids within that elementary cohort. Um, and what do we do with this? So...
Sorry, I think you meant 7:30?
7:30.
You just said 9:30, but I...
Oh, excuse me, 7:30, thank you.
Wanted to make sure everyone's...
Um, and again, so what do we do with this information? So, you know, for the district, I think regardless of the decision we make, you know, for next year, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't end the conversation about this. You know, Wilmington Public Schools should continue exploring bringing the school start times closer to that 8 a.m. hour. And, you know, in our kind of experience, uh, learning about this, you know, ways that could be is through bet- more or better ri- bus ridership data, school consolidation, and increased funding for buses. Um, for families, um, we really see an opportunity to really support, um, the district in gaining that more detailed data on bus ridership, as it will give us more legs to do other things that we would like, um, to do. And for those who aren't as familiar with bus, or families that aren't as familiar with bus ridership, um, it's actually, my understanding is it's, you know, actually counting how many people are actually riding the bus, which was not done previous to our, our new Transportation Director. Um, and that program is still relatively immature, um, and it's kind of execution relative to other districts, um, as it is new. The other thing is you don't have a lot of good data because COVID, and people are doing different things, and so you'd wanna, uh, over time, you would see more data and be able to, um, draw better conclusions about how many people are really riding the bus. How does that change morning versus night, et cetera? And again, potentially, uh, there's a lot of other places give you more, uh, uh, ability to tighten things up, maybe. Still a big deal. Okay. Um, next, uh, Scenario Preference, um, ease of adjustment... Next, scenario preference, ease of adjustment and the impact. So we already talked about this first bullet on the left already. Scenario one is preferred, but it's no, you know, it's not by a majority overall. It is the preference or close second for all schools except for the Shawshing and west. An additional piece of information here is that scenario one is seen, it's seen as having a positive impact on middle school and high school sleep. Having the least negative impact on childcare and after school activities. One thing we heard a lot in the PAWS event on school start times and even in a lot of the commentary was this, is 20 minutes even making a difference? The reality is half, I'm going to say like 47% of middle school parents did say it had a positive impact. For the district, the implications here would be, it would be important to educate families on this data. And demonstrate the varied perspectives of families across the community to facilitate acceptance, right? Don't just say what the answer is, but provide some of this information to facilitate that acceptance. And then for families, you know, it is important to recognize that many families did not have your same preference. And really respect the, the difficulty of this decision. I think that's, I can't understate that enough. Everyone, you know, talking about it in their own groups or even at the PAWS table, you know, felt so strongly about their view. And felt, of course, everybody else feels the same way. And this data says, no, they don't. And so we really need to respect the fact that other families are coming at this from different angles. We talked, touched on this before, while it's surface, at its surface, scenario one seems to impact all families equally, 20 minutes. In fact, a lot of parents said, commented on that. Isn't the case. I mean Shawshing and west parents, where school starts at 9:15 and ends at 3:20 will have more difficulty adjusting than other schools. However, I do want to note that ease of adjustment on scenario one is relatively close to that preferred scenario number two. If memory serves, we had something like 55% of these parents said that they would have no or minimal difficulty adjusting. And then scenario, their preferred scenario scenario was like 61%. So it's not like a wild difference, like this one was, would have been way easier for Shawshing and west parents. So it's not to say that, you know, that those are great numbers, but they are with there. And then regardless, the implication here is just, you know, we, we change, there's difficulty and change, of course. So we just want to consider ways to alleviate the difficulties for families, particularly Shawshing and west. But, you know, any families that are, you know, going to have to make, or live through this change if that scenario one is chosen. So a couple of ideas here, just as thought starters, right? You know, is there an opportunity to provide AM coverage for this, that hour or before, hour? Or before school study hall or enrichment opportunities that could, people could engage in before school when they have a later start time? Even in our, our PAWS meeting earlier this week, we talked about for the middle school that's going to be getting out early. You know, what can we do starting at 2 P.M.? Is that an opportunity to do some, some enrichments with those groups? Or service them with SEL learnings and really build a culture and drive some of the change that's needed there? The last bullet on this page was more of an official notification to be shared with extracurricular organizations. Certainly the school district could notify, you know, the soccer league and baseball league, the bigger organizations in town, like we're changing our times. But there's also little, you know, organizations throughout the community. So empowering parents with like an official notification that they can share will help those businesses decide what they're going to do. I don't know if they can do anything, but at least information helps if the school times are changing. And the last thing here is scenario one. We estimate, or I estimate will result in increased demand for AM CARES at Woburn Street and Shawshing. Approximately 50% increase in demands, which is, would be approximately 15 to 20 more students at each location. So really want to consider in this decision CARES ability to accommodate like that magnitude of increased demands. Particularly at this locations and what, how capacity limits might play in. And finally, I promise, accommodating change. So, we asked parents how important it was to them that this decision was implemented for the 2022, 2023 school year. And when they would need a notification of the change for that implementation, how far in advance. And what we found is parents are mixed in their desire to implement a change for the 2022, 2023 school year. Elementary parents who have the most to figure out logistically feel it's the least important to make a change. Middle school parents, of course, are most keen on making the change now, but are still divided on its importance. So among that middle school parent cohort that's most keen on making the change. It's like 50% who find it extremely, are very important to make this change. Which means 50% that don't think it's important or are kind of in the middle of the road on it. Elementary parents would need the decision as soon as possible while parents of older children need less lead time for planning. So implications here, you know, provide, you know, accommodate change by providing parents as much lead time as possible. Develop a communications plan to ensure families learn about a decision as quickly as possible. Using multiple channels and repeated messaging to ensure the message is received. Nobody wants to, you know, we make a, or there are, a decision is made at this table. You know, in the next month or so, but parents don't end up learning about it until August because they're not getting the right emails or checking their emails. We want to hit it over the head to make sure they know as soon as possible. And then consider what impact a decision now would have on CARES enrollment and communicate expectations to families. For example, typically enrollment for CARES begins June 1st. You know, depending on this decision, is that changing? Can we let people, parents know when or how it would be changing? Do we expect capacity to change as well? So that is all I was hoping to, or planning to present tonight. We have all the, and really hitting the highlights. And Mike and here are also, Mike and I are here also to answer questions about the data or parent perspectives or.
I had one more thing to add.
Sure, thank you.
So, that was a great overview. The other thing, if you read the comments and stuff, you can see that there's definitely a lot of families really struggling even in the current situation. With managing childcare, even in the current situation. So any change is going to be very stressful for them. Something for the committee to consider is it's not just elementary, but also middle school. Maybe expanding some aftercare or beforecare options for all the schools involved may make any changes less stressful on people in general. Because that's where all the anxiety is coming from is I can't get to work on time. Or I dropped off my kids super early, they, they get out super early, what am I going to do for four hours afterwards? So that's something maybe you all can consider as you're going through this really difficult decision.
Thank you so much.
Well, first off, I'll start with my sincere thanks for PAWS and all of their work and helping. You know, we've said this before about what a great asset and partner that they have been. And their expertise and, and, and their insight around what they have, what I have seen that they've been able to bring to these kind of topics. In a way that, a level of sort of a really strategic approach to, to both segment the data and try and capture in a, in a more nuanced way. What, what I could have certainly or, you know, has just been amazing. And this is a really obviously an important issue in which that deeper dive to understand perceptions and, and and the positions that folks have is so, so important. For what it's worth to, to share briefly and certainly worth something that, in the packet as well too, staff consideration, right? Obviously, this is a focus on our students, but obviously staff have the potential to be impacted as well too. In short, in, in short, there was a preference overwhelmingly for scenario number one. As, as the scenario that they would opt to go with. And the percentage of, of that breakdown was a total of 40, 43% of staff. And by the way, I should have said we had 240, 241 staff who took their, the survey. And scenario two, in terms of our preference, came in at 26%. I'm sorry, scenario three came in second at 29%, scenario two at 26%. And in terms of the difficulty for staff adjusting to that, they felt that for scenario number one. Provided the least amount of difficulty, if you will, to, to adjust. So, but this, you know, the intention of trying to provide you as a committee and the administration with an overview of what we have here of consideration in the scenarios is, was what this effort was really all about. And on one hand, of course, it, to some may, may have arisen to the place to say, well, just, just make a decision. It's about change, the ability to change the start times, so just make a decision. But at the beginning of this effort was always about trying to gather a sense of the community. And what the impact would be for them. The reality here at the end of the day is what I think that this shows. But quite frankly, to no real surprise, given, and I know I've talked about this before, what you hear and see other communities grapple with. Is there's always differing opinions on this very, very important issue. I think that's point number one. And point number two is what this is also, I, I think reinforced is that, you know, every reaction, every action has a reaction. And certainly we are going to see if we were to make any change or if we're not to make any change. A continued, you know, impact on, on our families and our students as well. I think what this also underscores to me is the fact that, and I think we've talked about this and certainly in different parts of the previous presentations. We worked here with very limited, a, a, a very limited set of parameters. And that is to say, using the same, I guess, the, the same inputs, right? The same number of buses with the same number of schools. And I unfortunately think that this is, you know, another challenge with trying to oversee the operations of eight schools. Over the, the expanse of town that we have here with a rather small fleet, you know? And the effort of trying to keep the fleet size down is all about the budget. It's all about trying to minimize the costs to our operating budget. While still holding true to the manner in which we've approached this in the past and that is providing free access for all in, in the town. And for those that are watching and saying, well, can't you just, can't you just squeeze this together and can't you? I can't stress enough the amount of examination of our, of our fleet, our transportation routes. And the reality is at the end of the day, unless we change anything. Either the number of schools or the number of buses we have, or the buses that we need. It's still is going to take that approximately two hours, give or take, to complete all the runs. And I can't, for those watching, stress that enough, that this has been analyzed. We have the greatest confidence, our transportation director, she knows our system, she knows our town. She has made tremendous changes in the short time that she's been here to tighten things up. You may not feel it, you may not see it. I'm sure some of you have and the differences, but I'm fully convinced that we are the best we can, we're, we're at the place the best we can do in terms of keeping the, the routes as short as they can be and, and, and these schedules as tight as they can be. So, you know, it, it, I think it presents these realities for us to really consider. And what that consideration is obviously is much discussion here to have.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're not voting.
No.
Tonight.
No.
You are looking for us to make a decision. Can you just remind us of the timeline?
Yeah, so the intention here, at least with this, this restart to this project and this effort was on course to have you make a decision at the end of May, the next meeting, May 25th is the next meeting. And, and so that's where we're at right now. Tonight was strictly meant to be informational, to share the feedback from the community and from the staff. Obviously to have a chance to engage more in terms of some of the, the thinking that you may as a committee have or questions you may have. And then come back at the next meeting and, and then make a decision in terms of which direction you may wish to go.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
A practical question. In regards to the scenario one, the start time at Weston Shawshing. If it is moved to 9:15, is, and I, I don't presume the answer either way. Is there any way to accommodate the difference in that start time for parents? For at least a period of time, years, a few years to say, the doors open at X time. If you need to drop, there's a study hall, there's a some option such as PAWS brought forward in the, in the survey. To accommodate parents that have a difficulty with 9:15 because that is rather late. Is, is that even a possibility or would it be a hard no? Is there a way to answer that question?
I would say it's not a hard no. It, it would present a, a need for us to think differently about what that, you know, would look like or could look like in terms of sort of a, you know, a drop, a drop off center or a location for, for that to be. We would have to take a look at how that intersects with what CARES program we could provide if there are other options. So no, it's certainly something that we, we absolutely could look at.
And the other side of it is, one of the original goals was about the middle school timing. And, and again, it's, it's, it's not a making a problem worse scenario like it kind of is with Shawshing and west. But in terms of not addressing one of the topics that was the original source of the end time of the middle school. In terms of a programmatic approach there, we have CARES at the elementary level and we have athletics and jobs. And hopefully a level of maturity at the high school, that kind of that middle school gap in terms of the after school. Is that something that could be a more programmatic approach from the district? To handling some chunk of that afternoon hours with the middle school.
For the middle school.
For the middle school if it doesn't shift later in the day.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say this, even if we weren't having this conversation, and this is, you know, another, another aspect here. But I think there is a real desire in general to try and expand. I wouldn't say not, not only because of the, the end times, but just in general to try and provide more extracurricular opportunities for middle school students. I mean, you, you may, may recall thinking back, I know it's challenging to do, but prior to COVID, there was, we called it ACE or there was. But there was a, a restart to the after school program, including a late bus. But anyway, efforts were underway and that had nothing to do with start times. So that will remain something that I think is very, very important. And I know many staff there do as well too, and families. Even if we end up not making a change, that's still something that's in the works. And I'll speak about more of that in the, in the future.
So I am fully on board with the research and the need to change. I am a little concerned, and I hate to say it because I, just looking at this beautiful presentation, I mean, it's concrete. And I, this is, I'm a detail kind of gal, so this is perfect for, for me. But I, I am concerned that even prior, let's say, pre pandemic. CARES had a waitlist to begin with. And I'm concerned that this would only drive that so that childcare issues, which a lot of people would kind of rely on CARES, may not be accommodating. And so those areas of childcare could only expand, that's a concern for me. Working parents is another concern because nobody, nobody, I don't very few, I mean, some remote work has been, is the new, is the new thing. But not everybody can work remote. And that adds stress. I, I just, that adds stress onto families. And I mean, I, we sit here, you know, when we go over the school calendar at the beginning of the school year. About combining the, the need for staff to meet professional days at the beginning with the half days. And we talk about this, we talk about childcare and, and, and great, we, we do it, you know, a year in, in advance. Still not easy for some families, I get it, I totally get it. No, this isn't, nothing's going to be 100%. But the other aspect is, is with the Shawshing and west is the after school activities. You know, for these kids, sometimes it's their only way of connecting with, with others in their community or outside. Compromising that and possibly have it be the meaning that these kids don't participate. Is a, is a, is a really top concern of mine. And granted, there's some adjustment that can be done as, you know, because I saw religious education as a piece, you know, aspects like that. But, you know, I think about the mental wellbeing and, and coming back. I think we do need to look at changing start times. I don't know if, and nothing, as I said, nothing's going to be perfect, I get it. But seeing, I mean, you've got great numbers of response. I'm a little concerned that there was not a strong majority, you know what I mean? I think that might be what plays on my concern, I, everything's a risk and you've got to start somewhere. I don't know if scenario one is, is a good enough risk for me to think that the impact would be. be as minimal. I, I think it's a great start, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm just, and granted, maybe it'll take me two weeks to crunch it, but I'm, I'm kind of struggling with those, those areas myself.
Jake?
I agree with you on a lot of those points. I think, when I, when I look at these scenarios and I think about the different levels, I think scenario one is clearly the leader, that the, if we had to make a vote for high school, middle school, it seems like that's kind of like a no-brainer, sort of, that's an easy one.
Exactly.
But it's the elementary that is really concerning me and the working families and the CARES program. You know, I, I know that it's, it's kind of like, we're doing these start times because we want to have the positive impact on the high school and the middle school kids, but it's like, we can't do that without also impacting the elementary school kids. So, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit hesitant, especially given the timeframe, especially with how CARES, I know they've got like a June 1st is typically their enrollment, and if we're not making a decision until the 25th, I mean, that's like, not a lot of time.
Shaving, yeah.
At all. And I think that it's really important to get the word out. So, I'm a little bit hesitant. I think what I would actually like to see is for us to really have some conversations with CARES and to really think about, how can CARES restructure themselves, read, you know, you know, sort of evaluate how they're doing things in order to meet the needs? I mean, that could mean expanding these, you know, before school times by, you know, much longer periods. How are they, you know, how are they staffing? I know that sometimes they're going to use high school kids and stuff, but maybe there's something else. I don't know, I have no real idea, but I know the importance of CARES, and I think that sort of really having another, having a conversation with CARES about how can, I know some conversations have been had, but I'm talking about like, some real deep structural changes to that program.
Thanks. You're referring, you're going back to?
Yeah. You've kind of touched on a point that, that I think is vital, because I think it's, I think it's vital, is that I wouldn't, if I were to vote, I wouldn't be, and I'd like to think this out a little further, but I'm not disagreeable to, as opposed to next year, waiting a whole year to make sure that we have our ducks in a row, especially because it is so impactful to the Shawshene and West families. And I think it's significant with regards to the data that's, that's collected. There was another point that I was going to make, my, oh, and another reason to possibly consider deferring it an extra year to give us that time is the Wildwood situation at the high school. And buses coming in, buses, and little ones coming in, little ones going out. That's something else that, that we didn't really have to factor in when, when the committee came together, and I'm so happy, I got to tell you, I'm very happy that you guys, this is wonderful, this data. But that's another thought, you know, as premature as it is, to think about as we look at start times with our current configuration, temporary, but just something to consider. Thank you.
Two quick things. I want to reiterate that the work that pause has done has been incredible. But the, the other point I wanted to raise is that while the CARES evaluation certainly is important, from a structural perspective, if we delay now, the answer isn't any different next year without some structural change, without changes to buses, and obviously, schools can't change in a year. But delaying now, other than the CARES evaluation, there's not a reason to really evaluate again for five or six years at the earliest, because that's when we might have potentially some vision of new schools. So, in some ways, if it isn't a good answer now, we take a break and we come back when we have a different answer. And maybe we can address the buses. That might be the one thing that would cause us to reevaluate in a year or two, where we might have, it might require substantial commitment. If we wanted, every, every parent says eight, eight to 8:30 would require a lot more buses. You know, it's not just a few. So, it's a concern, making a bad decision now, if we decided it was a bad decision, to make a decision at all is problematic. But on the other hand, if we're not making a decision now, there might be a bit of time we have to wait to get to a different answer from the, from the community.
Can you call him? Um, I'm not going to, I'm going to wait on my, my thoughts around this, but I just want to, I just want to respond to one piece, and that is the ridership. And I do think if we, so I, part of me, I have wanted to make this change, you all, for a while now, and I'm like, all right, let's go. And if we can literally close a building and get kids where they need to be within a matter of weeks, I think we can change our school start time by 20 minutes or so, right? I mean, obviously, I'm thinking mostly about scenario one, but on the other hand, if, but you're right, is it enough, is it enough for us to, to make that change? Are we really getting what we set out to get? I'm not going to say more, other than we can look at our ridership. And if someone were to come to me as a, as a parent and say, if you could have this, but it meant this, it meant having to choose, I want the bus or I don't want the bus, or it meant there's a fee for that bus. I mean, all I know is I drop my kids and I pick them up, and I sit in lines to do that at the middle school and the high school, mind you. And there's a lot of people who are doing that. And yet, my son could take the bus if he wanted to. He has a, like, he could do that, but he, but he's not. Like, I'm, so, is there a lot of that happening? And so, our ridership is not maybe what we think it is? And parents, if they had the choice to get their kids to school at a more, at what they're thinking of as an appropriate time, would they say, I actually don't need the bus, I can actually drop and pick up, and if I need it, I am willing to pay a fee for that? I mean, I think that's the only thing that I can see us doing if we don't make a decision on the 25th. But, so I just wanted to answer that. Wait one second.
So, you're, you've totally read my mind about that, because obviously, our goals need to align with a few really important factors that the data outlines. And one is, we have to get as close to 8:00 AM start time. But we also have to end, I mean, so, start times have to start at eight and end at nine. We have one hour to really fully, like, meet the needs of families and to be within those guidelines of what the research tells us about child and adolescent development and sleep, et cetera. So, clearly, that is a factor with our busing and consolidation. So, I agree with you, Jen. I think that looking at ridership more closely may be a task, an endeavor that we have to pursue and maybe change at some point what our expectations are from families, right? So, whether we, I'm sure I'll get a lot of pushback on this, but, but seriously, like, if kids are not taking the bus and we can shorten routes and make fewer stops, then that's what we should do. Or if families want to pay a fee for busing so that we can afford to have more buses and shorten that, that window of arrival times across the district. And then, you know, perhaps in five years, when there's this potential for school consolidation and that's going to reduce the number of stops and et cetera, those are some factors. But I also agree that this is a short turnaround time for CARES families. And, and I just can't envision CARES making any significant alterations to their programming between signup right now and next year in order to accommodate this, like, massive influx of kids. I just don't know how a program can be redesigned like that and, and be, and do a really good job at it. That's my concern.
Do we have that information? Do we know if, if they can, or we don't know that yet?
Do we know if they can adjust their program totally to?
To accommodate what we're thinking would be?
It's, it's certainly, I mean, I just talked to her today, actually. I mean, she's looking at this, she's tracking all of these developments and the possibility there, and, you know, and we'll certainly be, we'll get on it right away. Can, just like in any other year, though, I mean, I would caution to say, we, we can never guarantee spots. I mean, but she's been thinking for some time about what this might mean and how she could adjust the program. And I mean, we're collectively both very, very open to exploring something that might be different. But I'm sure if she were here, she would say, yeah, there's some angst with the thought of a rather narrow window that we, that this has been created for her. So, more time would be certainly obviously helpful.
But I think one of the issues, too, is just staff it. Binding people to staff it, and then we'd have to work with the areas of the school we're allowed to use if we have more enrollment. I think she tries to keep a one, one to 10 ratio, if you will, for one staff member. We could work with a school's physical.
So, I think that I both knew this would happen, and yet, I'm still a little bit dispirited that, that there's no solution that can sort of, not only, obviously, I knew that there's no way to make everyone happy, but that they all sort of seemed, seemed, you know, going to produce misery in a particular, particular direction in a particular way. But of course, what we have now, and I have beat this drum for a long time, that what we have now does the same thing. I'm glad that that was something that, that you mentioned at the start, which is just, just like, people have the anxieties, the same anxieties that we're talking about for any of the changes, where people have many of them right now. And which was the, you know, the impetus of, of looking at this problem in the first place. I mean, I think a couple of things that we certainly can't be changing our start times with some frequency. We can't just sort of try one set of start times out for a year, and then it's just like, oh, but if it doesn't really work out so well, we'll just change them the following year, and we'll, we'll take a second pass at it and like, see how it goes. I mean, it's, it could be chaos for families to try and, try and make these adjustments. So, you know, it either needs to be, in a sense, you know, kind of, you know, modest enough that the adjustment is sort of doable, or we really have to just think about, like, what's the best way to get this right? And, and at the same time, I 100% take Mr. Turner's point about, if we're going to push this change or this decision off into the next year, we have to really look long and hard at, but what's, what's going to be different? Because it's not just like another year is just going to magically make all the trade-offs disappear. So, and that's why, of course, I'm glad we started talking a little bit about, you know, some of the ridership or possible, you know, possible financial resources. But I think that we have to, we have to be thinking seriously about those possibilities to, if we're still going to be committed to this, but not make the decision this year, then we really need to be thinking about, okay, but what are we going to do differently next year that provides with, with different options? Otherwise, we end up in the exact same place with the, you know, with the same fundamental problems.
Thanks.
Sorry.
No, 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 go.
My apologies. But I, I think looking at the ridership is a good piece, but, but again, I caution because although we're suburbia, we don't have public transportation that those kids who could benefit have, have the accessibility or they have the ability, we don't have sidewalks that they can walk. So, there's, there's an access issue, and especially for those families within our community who may be lower income, there are certain vital things that they do depend on that I wouldn't want to make it harder for their kids to be, to be able to, to not be able to access school. So, that's, you know, a huge overarching piece in this. And I, I think this is important work, and I think that we do need to make the change, but I, again, and maybe I just need a little more time to crunch on it, I don't want to make a change if it's not going to be overall beneficial. You know what I mean? In the sense, not, it will be beneficial to the adolescents, and I, and I'm completely in absolute support of that, but not, I guess I'm just weighing in, and I'll probably think more thought, not at a huge cost to our youngest learners that also benefit from extracurricular activities or other, that, those opportunities which make them well-rounded adolescents. And again, my apologies, I, I think I've, I've got to think it through and kind of piecemeal it out.
Just piggyback on Ms. Burns. You know, when I look at scenario two and three, we've got two schools in each scenario starting at 7:30. So, it's like, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul, essentially. And that's, you know, that's not right either. And I, a priority that I, that I really appreciate in all the comments, I literally, I've spent hours looking at this, I've read every single comment. I will just say, some of the comments were uncalled for because we're eliciting people's feedback and information, so name-calling is unnecessary. However, I did really appreciate some of the commentary around the same sides of town, kids going, starting school at much closer times. So, you know, like, the Shawshene, well, which scenario, that they were so spread apart, so it's like picturing these, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't impact our family, I don't have kids that young, but it's like, some kids were starting at like, 7:30, and others were starting at almost nine. Like, that's crazy-making, right, for families? So, that felt like a really legitimate thing to, to be considering. So, you know, and scenario three, I just, I just felt like there was, there was negative impact on childcare, whether CARES is utilized or not. I think half, half of the parents indicated negative impact on after school activities with scenario three. So, those numbers alone, like, really, you know, made me nervous about scenario three. So, I don't know. I was, I, I like David, was, I knew there was going to be division amongst family perspectives, I anticipated that, but I didn't, you know, I really thought that one scenario would kind of rise a little bit more in, in sort of take the lead a little bit more so that we could feel comfortable that this was the right call, but this is really difficult.
Sense from, can I just ask them a quick one? From your group about what they prefer?
Like?
Yeah.
Because I imagine you have all different levels.
Do.
Right? And so, I mean, I'm sitting here going, well, I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and sure, if I can get him 20 more minutes, rather get the 20 than get nothing. Like, I'd rather get the 7:40 than get the 7:20. And so, but do, as a school committee member, does that seem big enough to make a change like that, right? So, I'm just curious, you must have had people around that table who have every level.
It was a microcosm of a macrocosm. So, the comments and the feedback on the survey were emulated in the group at the same time. So, people that had children younger on the Shawshene and West were very upset about school times being 9:15, while people that had kids in middle and high school were really appreciative of trying to get the start times back a little bit later because they understand that struggle there, too. So, I mean, we all recognize it's a very difficult decision, and there's no really great scenario right now, too.
But there's no balance, I think, is where, maybe that's where I'm struggling with. One side of town is really kind of, and maybe, you know, I think maybe that's it. Can I ask you, should you reach out to other districts who have implemented this to find out what their experiences may have been? Not to say, talk about specific timing, but what, I, I just, I was just curious.
Not, not us, but the school start time committee did look at that before our day. But I would add to David's point, I mean, the West side, like, today is not ideal. You know, 8:55 is not ideal either, maybe barely workable, but that also is area.
What I found about reading the comments to your point, Melissa, is, is in essence, not surprisingly, they mirror the 40, 24, 24 type percentages where almost every single one of them, this is too early, this is too late, why aren't we making a bigger change? Why are we making a smaller change? You know, so the comments are extremely consistent with the numbers, which are very, very across the board. Every scenario has its pros and cons, and in some ways, the, the, helping the middle school, the detriment of Shawshene and West was a clear, you, you heard that, the middle school parents are like, yes, and the Shawshene parents and West parents are no. And it's, it's because of the way that things shift and slide down with scenario one, and the other scenarios are even more accentuated for some of the schools. So, it's, the comments, yeah, there's, there's, your, your points are very, very well made.
If we were starting from a blank slate and we proposed our current school start times, we would have people just saying, just like, 7:20 for the middle school? 7:40 for the high school? What are you talking about? They're the kids who need the most sleep. Like, you know, don't you know anything about the research on sleep? And we, they're And we, there'd be kind of no answer to that, be like, yep, that's, that's true. Everything you say is true.
Can I go back to this one forty dismissal is not good. It is not good. And those of us who have middle schoolers have either had to invest quite a bit of money into after-school, some kind of a care or some kind of a club or some kind of a, a sports thing, right? Like, so there is such a large amount of time there before their activities really start and when they are getting home or visiting the Plaza, visiting Starbucks or visiting Yentile. And, and I just feel like if we could just keep them engaged just a bit more, and that obviously speaks to the middle school clubs and activities, and there are middle school clubs. I mean, there are things happening there, I would say, every day of the week. But, you know, on those days where my, my son had jazz band until three thirty, it was great. Like, that was a good, because it was like engaging, he's there on Fridays till three. So I'm like, if we had stuff, and it's not so, it's the early start, but it's also that afternoon time that I actually find to be more dangerous, to be quite honest, than I find that early, you know? So it's sort of, even if we're getting, we're just taking twenty more minutes and they're not being dismissed until two, I can handle that just a little bit better than the one forty. Like, it's, it's a lo- it's a long time and they're somewhat independent. I don't know. So I really, I am worried about pushing this off for another year, but I don't know. I, I saw Jay first, I'm sorry, and then Jay.
I think, I think this is a very good conversation and it really gets at the essence of this whole thing, which is just that, like, this is incredibly, incredibly complicated and, you know, you're never going to get a huge number of people being like, yes. You know, I think like, you know, David has said it many times, like, doing nothing is making a decision. However, I think, and while I appreciate that, I also know that if, if we make a decision for next year, then we're stuck with that decision for the next five plus years. Because we can't just be willy-nilly doing this, changing start times every year. I think on the, the side of, of waiting another year, I think we can do some evaluation of CARES and maybe have them, maybe there's some creation of some middle school program, because I know that there was before, but even bigger, so that, you know, whatever the time is at the middle school, because even if the middle school is getting out at two o'clock, that's still super early and enough time for those kids to go to the Plaza or to Yentile or wherever. I think exploring funding for more buses over the year, I think makes a lot of sense because like Dr. Brand was saying, you know, the sort of, the immovable things are the number of buses and the number of schools. And that's creating this problem. I mean, everybody wants eight o'clock, but we can't always get eight o'clock. We could get closer to that if we increase the number of buses or reduce the number of schools. We're not reducing the number of schools right, right away. I think, and exploring the bus ridership is important too. So I think those three things are something that can happen within this year, rather than getting us locked into this, you know, this, for the next five years, when it's like, if we had just spent another year and figured out a, a way to, to, to change those two constants, the number of bus, really one constant, which is the number of buses, and then also reevaluate how we can use CARES. I think those are two crucial things that I wouldn't want to get, to not explore those two things. And I don't think we have enough time to explore those.
So just to switch gears a little bit, so I, I was reading the comments too, and I, I would be interested hypothetically, going with scenario one, how does that impact like our CIT days or district-wise? Because that's a very important note that, I mean, I don't want to cut out time out of professional development that could really benefit staff, especially as we're approaching enrolling into new programming and, and things of that sort, which I think is vital. How would, let's say, this proposed change, how would that impact professional development with our staff? And being able to get everybody in, I mean, in one location?
Well, so it would, you know, depending on the scenario, if it was a straight shift of twenty minutes, everything would be shifted back twenty minutes, which means it would be, you know, twenty minutes later into the day for everything. The, the current scenario that we have, the configuration for professional development is extremely difficult because when you look at the current start and end times where, you know, somebody's always hanging around waiting to start something where other people are not even done and rushing out the door. And we've moved a lot of our PD to virtual, which is good in some ways in efficiencies, but it doesn't always offer the same opportunities. But we have had to do that or found the need to because of, just because of lack of travel time and not having people in the same schedules. And when we look at our CIT days, really, there is just shy of two hours on those days where we have the availability to have all staff together. And so it's, you know, that one forty to three is the prime window where if we need to do something district-wide, that's all we're getting on those days. And if we don't have that additional hour that's extended on a CIT day, you know, we, like, we'll, we have one building-based PD day this year. And that's really, it needs to be specific to each school and not district-wide because there's not enough time. By the time people travel, we, we have less than an hour together. So, so, you know.
That makes it difficult building teams though and collaborating, which is kind of, I think, as we go into the, one of our, the next top old business is a real important key for our district in the success of all that piece.
This is for Ms. Elliott. So if I'm understanding correctly, scenario one wouldn't allow any change for professional development shifts that we know the research also supports around curriculum cooperation amongst grade levels, amongst, amongst buildings, across town, et cetera. We don't gain any benefit in going to scenario one in regard to PD.
Correct. There's no additional alignment with grade spans or anything like that. It would just move things back.
That's, that is important to me, I will just say.
And it's not different than what it is now.
No, it's the same as it is now, it would just be a later.
In the, in the other scenarios, you can see that, for example, like sister schools have like paired start and closing times. So it's like all the third grade teachers can be available at the same, at the same time, you know, the, the west and
Really valuable.
Shawshine and Wilburn Street. I look, so I mean, scenario one, you know, again, seems to be, again, the most preferred, the closest to something preferred. I mean, that's been there since the very beginning when we first, went back when we had eleven scenarios. You know, that was always there. It's just like, well, you know, one thing we could do is just push everything ahead a little bit. And, and I remember kind of at the time, just thinking, just like, if that's how we do, what are we even doing here? Like, why are we convening a committee and doing all this, all this work just to just like, oh, maybe we'll just push everything by, by twenty minutes? And of course, here we are, like, maybe that's our, our best option. So there's a little part of me that wants to despair that we've kind of ended up as, as that is the, maybe the best option at this time after all the consideration that went into trying to come up with all the other combinations of the scenarios. I mean, part of what's frustrating about this process to me is that we, you know, it's like, I think we want to be talking about, you know, what's best for kids and, and for our district as a whole in terms of these, you know, considerations of kind of PD and, you know, making good decisions for our families and getting kids, you know, reasonable start times and end times. And in, it's sort of instead, it just feels like we're working in some kind of like spatial logic puzzle. Just like, you know, in a booklet where it's just like, you know, Wilmington has this many buses and and kids have to be within these parameters over here. So just like, you know, now you make your little bus schedule, just kind of moving the pieces around, you know, uh-oh, watch out, traffic ties up.
It's a new board game.
A new board game. Create your own start, school start time.
It's like Jumanji for public education.
And, and so there's a part of me, as I said, it's just like, I kind of hate that it's come to this, like, maybe that's the best choice we have here. But it would, it would do something and, and it would, you know, it would improve the situation that we sort of are all here to improve, which is the early start times for secondary schools. And I want to be, I mean, I do want to be thinking that we, we sort of have some ideas of like, oh, if we had more time and we could explore these other, these other aspects of it. And if, if there's a realistic chance that we can actually make some of these bear fruit, then I would probably be in favor of kind of, you know, pausing on this and holding because I would certainly, given as we said, that whatever we choose, if we make a change, it's got, it's going to stick for some number of years. And so I would rather get something better next year that we then have for four or five years than just kind of put this into place now because it's, seems the best option available. But on the other hand, if we're just going to kind of end up in the same situation next year, better that we at least get this, I mean, if this is the best option that we have for several years, then it's best not to put it off for another year. And that's kind of what I'm trying to go back and forth on is judging like, you know, how much do I, how much do I really think that we will have some better options if we explore some different possibilities next year? Like, how committed are we really going to be to setting aside extra money for buses? Like, sure, that's an easy thing, this thing to say, it's like, ah, if we just put aside some more money for buses in the budget, then it's like, ooh, that could, that could, they give us some more possibilities to play with.
Heteracks are going to be doubling.
But, yeah, but it's just like, but, I mean, buses are really expensive and there, you know, there have been driver shortages. And, you know, if we spend, you know, seventy thousand dollars on a bus, that seventy thousand dollars, we're not spending on another district priority. And we can't, you know, this is not the only thing we have going on right now, to say the least. So, does that help anyone decide?
But I will say, I mean, I think when we think about buses, it is one bus is a, is a staff person. I mean, if you think about that, you're adding a bus, that's, that could be another staff person in the building, so. So I think a couple of things, what do we want? I don't think, we're, we're not making a decision tonight. I mean, I think there are probably some things we still need to, to figure out. And so I think one of the things I would like before our next meeting is to just have a better understanding from CARES as to whether or not, we know those numbers, we know what parents have said. If this were nine fifteen, I would need that. So I'm just curious to hear from CARES as to whether or not they could accommodate that because that would be an important part for me in order to make a really well-informed decision. Is there anything else? I mean, I'd love some ridership information, but I don't know if that's even going to be accurate right now. So part of me says it's probably not even worth asking for, but, yeah.
Well, I wonder if the question is how, if she's able to even do this? Like, I, I could never, my brain could never crunch this, but how many buses are we talking about? If we were to run the same exact routes that we have right now and wanting to shorten the time by thirty minutes, at least thirty minutes? Like, I forget the exact.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I think, I mean, I, I, we can certainly speak to Lisa and I can't rec- I'm sure she'll be able to lend some sort of, some sort of insight or, you know, guesstimation around what that might look like. Just so that, depending on where you're going with this vote, you, you as a committee, we as a committee will have a better sense of, all right, are we, if, if we're really looking, if the goal is to try and tighten up or shrink these routes, we're really talking in the range of X amount of buses additionally. I, I'm sure that she can give it, she's pretty good in kind of giving that insight. And CARES, I think she's planning to be here next, at the next meeting. And so certainly, was there something else that was?
No, I would say just the, oh, yeah, the ridership, that would just be helpful for me and then the CARES, anything else?
In addition to like the, the number of buses needed, I wonder too, if, like, what would she need from families to, if, to like reduce the number of stops? Do you know what I mean? Like, so for, like, I'm thinking, like, how many times the bus stops between this house and, you know? Like, that takes time every time. So if there is a way to understand, like, if she could estimate, like, by how much would, reducing the number of stops?
I suspect that what she will, yeah, I'm not sure about that question, but I, I strongly believe that what, which Lisa would share is that one of the, one of the key decisions that, you know, as a committee, we may want to make or, you know, going forward is revisiting the policy slash approach in terms of actually getting a hard commitment or a commitment for the year from, from, you know, families and students who are, are going to use the bus. And as you know, that's not how we currently approach it right now. And as she's spoken about, Lisa's spoken about before, it's because of that fact that she's guesstimating to a degree, but trying to plan for the most.
Right.
And because of that, that is exactly why we have this inefficiency in the system because we have a lot of buses that are not running even near to what their capacity could be because people, families sometimes do, but sometimes don't use the buses. So that's a wider question or a broader question, obviously, around perhaps policy change, but.
Yeah, because I, I see buses look very empty to me.
Well, I've been hearing this for years. Like, I mean, I've heard different school committee members say that exacting. I see buses that don't look full.
There's like, you know, six or seven kids on a big yellow bus.
If that is what is holding us back from doing what we need to do for kids, that just doesn't seem, and yet to go through all of this and still have buses that have, that are half-full, that just doesn't seem physically smart.
But can we support all that traffic with, and, well, not talking about high school and middle school, but like the, the older schools, you know, with drop-offs, like the Botwell, Wilburn Street, you know what I mean? I know that Wilburn and North have their, their system in place, but the lines, you know, that, well.
Well, I think it is. I'm not saying we change, I'm just saying.
I'm saying it's happening now.
That's what people are already doing.
If there's eight kids on a big yellow school bus, those other kids that would be on that bus are getting to school in a car, drop-off.
And ideally, we, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Ideally, we could optimize the buses we have, and I know that the seventy thousand dollar number is a full-size bus with a, with a driver and obviously a lot of the cost is in the driver, not the vehicle. But if there, if it's inefficient use to have the thirty, those thirty-foot buses, if some of them were half, would that be a way to be more efficient and have eighteen buses instead of sixteen, but some of them are short? You know, so if we had a flexible fleet that could, she could have some routes that were longer and shorter to optimize that way. The only thing I would add to your two requests though is, is CARES is a, is a six-school topic. I think scenario one has CARES plus with the Shawshine and West. Is there, because that would almost be an extra added thing in between CARES and the current start time for, for more kids. There might be a lot more kids that need to be in that program for twenty minutes instead of hour or two. So is, is there, it, it's, it's not just CARES, it's CARES plus at those locations maybe? Would be, is, is that a possible remedy?
Can I add? I'm not, on the data, I think that the estimations of fifteen to twenty people was probably, I don't, I don't know how I would answer that as a parent. I think that if I needed before school coverage, I probably would have selected CARES. But you make a very good point, but like, what, whatever it is, you know, the three hours, it means it's more expensive on the west side of town for AM CARES than, than it is on the north side of town today because the amount of time, you're, you're either in the program or you're not. It doesn't matter how much you. So I think you make a good point of also that cost adjustment if there's like an hour version, probably. Because that's when you would put your, you know, the, even though it's on twenty minutes change, you got the twenty minutes on the bus, or half hour on the bus. So it's probably an hour difference between when people are sending along their child.
And then, thank you. And the precision I was making is that if there are parents now who could, can do eight fifty-five, but can't do nine fifteen or whatever the precise drop-off time is, is there something to open the doors for them at eight fifty-five and not change the door open time at the school? Which might be really problematic, I don't know. I can't speak for the administrators there.
I feel like that becomes some, some kind of inequity at some point. Not right now, but like years down, like, all of a sudden, it's like, wait, why does that child get to go there for twenty minutes? And they're doing these enrichment activities, whatever it may be called, and then, but they're not getting, I don't know. So I just worry about, but I, I don't want to do something like that's not sustainable just to get us through this sort of like the tricky time until this just becomes the norm. And then you don't, you don't think about it because you didn't have it any other way, right? Eventually, I mean, the, we cycle through the, we cycle through those schools pretty quickly. I mean, you're only there for three years, right? You're not there for a long time, so you kind of have to, you acclimate to these different times pretty, pretty quickly. I don't know. The other thing I just, so ridership, CARES, and then any, I think that this idea of the Wildwood that I think Mrs. Burns brought up earlier is important, making this decision.
There's an intersection with that certainly.
So if we could have an update on that too, I think that would help us.
You will be getting an update on Wildwood, yes.
Is there anything else that you need for next time? Well, this was tremendous and I, I mean, I know they've all said it, so I won't, I won't gush more. won't gush more, but thank you, thank you, thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness and, and really helping, helping us to think through the, and remove those other scenarios and think through the eyes of a family. I mean, I think that it was really, really helpful, and to know that you were sitting around there, kind of going back and forth with all of them is just, just really helpful to us as we make or don't make a decision. We'll make a decision.
We'll make a decision. We don't know what it'll be yet, though.
It's a decision, either way. So either way, we're making a decision, but we really do appreciate it. And if anyone does reach out to you or you have more insight for us, please don't hesitate.
Sharing.
Share.
Sharing is caring.
Thank you.
It's really helpful. And we know that, and you have such a, an understanding of sort of the pulse of the community now, so when you, you'll probably get feedback, and then so when you hear those sorts of things, I think that's helpful for us to know so that we can then be proactive as opposed to reactive. Do you have any, any last thoughts or words of advice for us before you go?
Got him on your shoes.
Yeah, seriously. Yeah, no, I think just one, one thing is, you know, another thing that came up, which I heard a little bit in the conversation, was if there is a general shift, this could put people that currently cannot afford before care, after care, now in a position where they then have to pay it. So if there's options to help defray those costs or to help those people, it's something that, it suggests the committee take a look at. And then lastly, I have to give Jen all the credit, I'm just sitting here. So, you know, she did a lot of the survey, the whole PowerPoint, she did a great job with this.
This is what I do for work. This is what I do for work. Yeah. I, I do survey research to help drive brand strategies, so.
Well done. It's wonderfully done, yes, thank you.
You're hired.
Dr. Brand started hiring first.
Tune in on the twenty-fifth, no, come, come back on the twenty-fifth. Tune in.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you. Leave it on the cliffhanger.
I know. All right. We are going to shift back to the middle school program review update.
Sure, thank you.
It's not going to be a long update, but it is going to be an update.
In your packet, there is an overview of, or included in the packet is the presentation that I most recently shared with the middle school staff, and I won't walk through that, but if I may just sort of back up and give you a broader sense of what happened in CIT Day and sort of where, where we're at in this program review and where we're going in the next short window of time. So you recall that there's been, we spoke, I've spoken about this and shared this with you before, a few different opportunities and sort of streams of information that have been gathered, that, that I've been gathering from staff and from the community and from students about the middle school, our middle school here in town. Again, for someone who's just sort of tuning in for this, why are we doing a program review and what's the, what's, what's the intention here? This is rooted in one of my goals that I shared with you as a committee back at the beginning of the year, specifically to sort of think of it, I guess, if you will, as a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree review of the middle school and what do our stakeholders see as important opportunities for helping move the school forward. And you've seen the data from the AMLE survey, you've seen the data that's been collected through staff, student feedback and so on. What I did is, and have been doing over the last number of weeks, is pulled that information together. And that information's not specifically in your packet, but you will see that information as a whole as part of the report on the twenty-fifth. And what I, what the time was spent on the, on the CIT Day last week with the staff was to share with them two broad categories. One, the first category was what my sense of the findings were in terms of important opportunities to consider for forward progress. There's lots, as I've shared before, lots of great things at that school that are going on, and the, the information pointed very clearly to that. But inevitably, right, when we sort of conduct these reviews, what hangs out there as opportunities for growth, what's on people's minds, is things that people think need to be changed or improved. And so I gathered those together as a set of findings to, and I presented those to the staff. The second category was what I, based upon those findings and based upon my knowledge of the research and best practices, what sort of looms as the seemingly priorities that would help advance the school forward? Programs, the culture, climate, the leadership and organization. Those are the three broad sort of buckets, if you will, that I've shaped this work around. And I did borrow that largely from, I'll admit, the, the AMLE survey, but I thought that it lended itself well. What I did with the staff and during the CIT Day was sort of re-anchor, I guess, them in terms of what this work is about, what the most important, critical research-based findings have been for effective middle schools. And I asked them two fundamental questions, and they were broken down into their houses, discovery and so on. And the two questions were, number one, from the findings, what's missing? Now, they've had a chance to kind of, whatever the word is, sort of, you know, digest what has come forward through the last few weeks, or the last few months, rather. What's missing, right? They're in that mode of sort of thinking about, okay, this is an opportunity, this didn't show any, up anywhere, but we shouldn't lose sight of this. As a simplistic example, one of the things that's standing out in my head right now, there's lots to share, but, you know, the opportunity to create more awards and celebrations of students, just a simple example. The second question was based upon my draft priorities, what would they prioritize? In other words, what do they think is the most important? It was an activity that was done, as I said, in houses. We again used the JamBoards, I spoke about this tool in the past, I really like it, the way for people to provide their feedback and, in a safe way and, and so on. And that's been gathered together. And I'm working through that, literally as we speak, to put together for you my report that will identify the recommendations and priorities that I think at this point in time, over the near, short term, and a little bit longer term, I think sit there as most important, most timely, most urgent, I guess, if you will, to kind of move the school forward. So the staff were very much involved, have continued to be very much involved in this work. I will say that it has remained from the outset of this effort, important to me, and I hope the committee, and I echoed that with staff as well, too, they, any of these kind of endeavors can't be sort of top-down administrative without the engagement of, in this case, the middle school staff. And that remains the case. And their feedback has been very, very helpful to get to this place. So my intention for the twenty-fifth next, next meeting, and there's a lot of things sort of mounting up, but we are running out of runway here in the school year, is to provide you and the community with that report. That will be shared with the staff beforehand, it's only appropriate that, you know, that they'll have a chance to see that before the community as a whole does. But this is obviously an important place that we're at. I'm excited about, I'm very excited about the, the feedback that has continued to come through this process and the, the sense of the staff that really, I have to say, have to say, is really coalescing around some priorities that span the building, that align with what I think is important, what research speaks to, and, and I think is really just exciting to consider moving forward. So that's where we're headed. Happy to take any questions, the presentation was there today, just to, tonight, just to give you a sense of that work. Those JamBoards that I just mentioned, the most recent feedback, that'll be added to, that'll be added to the report. And I should say, for those in the community, we have created a section of our website as a, this is a special project, too, like the start time, this presentation, those JamBoards, and the other presentations to date, all of that information is available in, in case anyone's interested. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's great, thank you so much. Questions? Mrs. Plowman, and then Mrs. Burns, and then Mr. Smaha.
Dr. Brand, can you just clarify, the work on May fourth via the JamBoard?
Yeah, yes.
Were the findings and recommendations that staff were reflecting and commenting on taken from the AMLE assessment or from their own perspectives?
A great question, thank you. I'm sorry I wasn't clear on that. So I put together, I'll call it a set of findings. And I put the findings together based upon the AMLE survey, along with other information that's been gathered through, there's been a couple of other interact, opportunities with staff to provide feedback. So it's been taking all of that as a whole. Indeed, though, the AMLE survey's been a, a cornerstone of this, of this work. I mean, you recall, right, there was a lot of really important information in there. So it's been, it was all of those things, I then took those together and provided the staff with, and I told them that, I was the author of that, presenting that to them as what I pieced together, both findings and, and possible priorities and recommendations.
Just a really quick comment, too. I think it's been a critical and positive impact that you have decided to spearhead this yourself. You know, I think that something that's been obvious at the middle school is inconsistent leadership and change a lot. And I think that your decision to, to really take this on amidst all of these other things you have going on in the district, but at one point, we discussed a consultant to come in and lead this charge, and you're doing this yourself. And I have to imagine that that has had a really positive impact on the staff there and really feeling like somebody internal to the district with your leadership skills is really sort of taking them all in and trying to help them to really sort this, you know, to sort the programming out and to have some ownership within it, and you're sort of modeling that to them. So thank you for, for your commitment to that.
Mrs. Burns?
I love this presentation, especially the YouTube piece with regards to the different middle school administrators and what middle schools, what makes effective middle schools, you know, diversity culturally, and as, and as it pertains to curriculum and instruction assessment. And I really have to say, in looking at the rest of the presentation after watching that and, and reading the, the intro to the presentation, it's tough not to take more of a holistic approach, especially after, well, public schools have been in for the past two years. And they talked about, a lot about teams and that, the importance of time and the collaboration piece, which I think is just the bedrock and foundation of, of culture within all of our schools. And I think, in, in some ways, and this is just an observer, and I may be inaccurate in my observation, but I just think that there's a fracture with that, within, you know, with, within their own learning communities, and, you know, which, and with students, and, you know, I, it's not one group or the other, but I think there's such a fracture of that, that we need to get back to those, those PLCs or those teams with, within our schools to create the, the culture we need to see develop, especially after, and I, I think in something like this, as we, we talk about this in a variety of different areas...
Sorry, sorry, he was raising his hand and I told him that Jay was next, so I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. About maybe considering ways that we could push in mental health services into our schools again, getting on that, don't want to digress off of this piece, but I think that could be a real helpful resource in, in the future as we look at the middle school, but, you know, but I think it's something that both staff and students could possibly benefit from, you know what I mean? And I think that is a part of our inclusive culture and the well-being of our community, our schools, school communities. I just wanted to point that out, so.
Thanks.
Jay?
I just, I just wanted to just, it's a little bit of, of a kind of what I think Mr. Plowman was, was saying, but the, the fact that you have gone through this and you have prioritized the teacher voice here, I think is something really to be applauded. I, on a personal note, I wish that there were some administrators in some of the schools that I've been in the past who would value that as well. But the question that, the way you framed it by saying, this is what I found and I need you to tell me what's missing from it, is incredibly powerful. And I, and I, and I, I really hope that, that the, the staff there are recognizing, you know, these, the, the importance of this and how if there really wants to be a change at the middle school, that this is how real change happens. So I just want to say that I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Can you talk a little bit about how you see, now that you're kind of this, this deep in the work, how you see the timeline spooling out from here? Because there's going to be, I think, some stuff coming back to us. But then also, just as you've been kind of making your findings and sort of thinking about recommendations, some of them, I'm sure, are, I mean, hopefully, there's some low-hanging fruit that we can kind of jump right on, but other things are going to have to be more medium-term or long-term projects. You can't, you know, you can't just, you know, make, make change in a day.
Yeah.
So can you talk a little bit about?
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, great question. Yeah, I absolutely, there is, to use the proverbial sort of lower hanging fruit, but not that it's not significant or has the potential to be impactful, but, I, I mean, I'll definitely share, and I think this will come through when you see some of the feedback, but there's a, there's a yearning, there's a desire that sits there, you know, just the comments that some of you made, sort of just a reminder, I think the reality that we know, you know all too well, is that sadly and unfortunately, this school has seen such a turnstile of leadership over the last eight to ten years. For whatever those reasons are, they are, and they're in the past, and we have stability that is, is taking hold. But, but the reality is, you know, sort of, ultimately, this effort is trying to make up for some lost time to respond to that very unfortunate set of circumstances. I mean, think about any organization that has somebody different at the head every single year, which has almost been the case. And so what will come from some of these priorities, there, there absolutely will be some things that are going to be able to be put into effect for next year. There are some things that will absolutely require some groundwork to be laid over the course of some degree of next year that won't be able to take effect for the year after. But I, I don't think you will see something that's going to come with something that's sort of a five-year goal. I mean, we're talking about the next, you know, two to three years. There's going to be a capacity issue, obviously, you can't sort of, you know, create a brand new school from the ground floor, but there are, there are pieces that will collectively be able to come together and with the, the hopeful will and interest and engagement of staff, be really able to help drive these forward. These are not going to be something that I'm going to be driving forward directly, or Christine, or, or quite frankly, even the school leaders alone. This is going to take truly teacher leadership to help move some of these things forward. And with that in place, and I'm confident it will be, we'll be able to get going with some of these things in the next sort of two to, two, one, one year for sure for some, two, maybe three year for some others, so.
That's good news. Great.
Indeed.
Excellent, thank you very much. All right. Our next item of business is the superintendent evaluation process outline. So you have that outlined in your packet with some important dates. May eleventh is today, and I am reviewing the timeline with you. May twenty-fifth, Dr. Brand will present end-of-cycle progress report to you, to all of us during the meeting, so he'll report out on his goals. June third, individual committee members' reports will be due to, to me, really through Tracy. And then superintendent evaluation committee will meet to review all of those individual reports, and we will develop one report to present back to you and to Dr. Brand and to the community. The subcommittee will meet the week of June sixth, and then we'll do our final presentation June twenty-second. There is, so there's some other notes here. If you are new to this, I'm happy to sit with you, well, you did the mid-cycle?
Yes.
But... But have not done a full, so I'm happy to, to sit with you and go through some of these pieces. It's more, I mean, some of it's just finding what you need to find when you're looking at the standards and more deeply understanding those standards so that you can feel confident in how you're doing your rating. So I'm happy to schedule something, and we can do that at another time. People who have done it before, then obviously, it's a similar process. Tracy's super organized and has set up a shared drive for us. And so you'll see, you'll see a shared drive. It's the superintendent evaluation. If you are on the subcommittee, which obviously we're, do the reorg in just a sec, you also have a different shared drive that has, that will have all of those reports and whatnot. And we'll meet to do that together again the week of June 6th.
Are the forms in that shared drive as well? The form, will be populated?
Well, so yes, the form is there. The goals are not populated yet, so I will take care of that. They will be.
Very good, okay.
So they will be. And then obviously, we evaluate on the goals, but there are those other pieces that we have to provide ratings and some content as well. And so Dr. Brand will, will give us some stuff to put in there. Obviously, he's been doing it all year, but it's easiest for us when we're doing it to be able to go to a folder and then outline some of that. So we've talked about that, and that will be in there for you as you start to do your report. I wouldn't start this until he presents at our next meeting. And then I know it's a kind of a short turnaround, but, so if you're not familiar with it, we can meet. I would look through the form, the old one, so that you can see what it looks like and start to understand.
I think it's worthwhile looking at the four standards. And just kind of just starting to think in those terms, get that vocabulary in your head.
And so, and those of us who have done it, I mean, any of us are happy to talk through some of that with you or meet and go through that. Is there anything I'm missing?
I just have to make sure that Stephen is on, has access.
To the, okay, perfect. All right, so between, especially if you're new to this, between now and the next meeting, I would look through, wasn't last year, we didn't do one last year. We did the mid last year, so it would be the year before, but that's in there, I believe. So the last full evaluation is in there as an example. So I would review that to get comfortable with it. And then I would look at the mid-cycle. That's where we did, we evaluated at a midpoint, and I would look through that. And then obviously, all of the new information that has come in. Okay? All right, any other questions?
I don't have, I don't have a question. I have two comments. One is, I'm happy to answer any questions. Two, I've been on the subcommittee for the past couple of times. So if people have questions about it or understanding any of the four area, what are they called?
Standards.
Standards, four areas. And Tracy, I don't think Melissa is, has, has the drive shared with her. I don't see if I see it.
I don't think I have a folder for superintendent evaluation.
Right.
I'm gonna, I have a note to double-check.
Thank you. Thanks, Jay. Any other questions right now? Just to get us on track, put the date in your calendar and I can go, you can email it to Tracy, I think that's just the cleanest way to do it, and then she'll upload it to the subcommittee folder. And then we typically have, we have met in person, although I guess we didn't last year, Jay, right? With Joe, we met, I guess via Zoom. In the old days, we used to meet in person with all paper spread across the conference room table. I kind of miss those days. Maybe I'll just do that for fun. And there would be a reader, and there'd be a tallier, and it was, yeah, it's very funny. So it won't look quite like that, but. All right, great. If there are no more questions, I think we can go right to the reorg of the subcommittees. Are we okay with that? Great. All right, the first one up is policy subcommittee. Currently, I'm on that. David, Jesse, MJ is an alternate. We have taken, I mean, we have met when needed, but prior to COVID, we were actually meeting regularly and revising our policies on a very regular basis. And so we're anticipating that that's going to pick up again, and we're going to get back into that. I think, what letter, where we at? Do you remember? Where were we? Like I?
I or J.
I or J, we were.
About halfway through the alphabet.
Yeah, of course, now we have to go back and do some of the ones, but we, I mean.
Now all the ones we've done are out of date.
It's like this vicious cycle, we just can't seem to, yeah, obviously, the ones over now, a couple of years. But anyway, we would really like to try and get through those in the next few months and finish that up. And then we can get onto a better cycle where we're reviewing more regularly. Really, it's been catching up. Some of the stuff I think we reviewed had been, it was really old. So I think in the past, we were just sort of revising when it came from MASC, and then there wasn't any other real revision unless it was being told we had to revise it. So I think it's a good habit to get into, just to review the policies on a rotating basis. So that is our hope. We have, we've tried to save the district some money by not having MASC do it, which we had looked into, because it's just not sustainable, I don't think, for them to do it, because then you have to have them do it all the time. So we're trying to make sure that we can kind of sustain this ourselves. But it is, it is sort of a time commitment, but not huge. I mean, you do the work at home, Tracy sends the policy, you have access to the online, you go through and just see what matches and what doesn't, you do track changes. We do about five or six at a time or something like that. Each.
Depending on how long they are.
Come to a subcommittee meeting and review it, and then bring it to the full committee for a first read, take their comments, go back, and then bring it to the committee for a second read. So that's kind of what it looks like. So if you like that kind of stuff, then maybe the policy subcommittee is for you. Okay, anybody interested? I mean, if you're on it and you want to stay, you can say that. And if you are really dying to get into this group, then let us know.
Or anyone who wants to get off of a committee, because.
What's that?
Or anyone.
Or anyone who wants to get off, right, right. So I guess however we want to do that. Do you want to start there? And if you're interested in removing yourself, speak now.
I'd still like to be an alternate personally.
All right, MJ, sticking with the alternate. Jesse, David?
I'd like to stay in the room.
Okay, great.
I'm willing to stay, but if someone has a great interest in policy, I'm.
Okay, so Jesse's staying, David's opening his seat if someone wants it.
I think it would be a really interesting learning experience for somebody new. So if you're, if you're comfortable with that, Dave.
Well, you can take my spot.
Or yours.
I mean, I'm, and Jay, you're good.
Good.
Melissa, you're good, because you have other things that are on your list.
I do have some other things on my list.
All right, so I don't know, do you want to do rock, paper, scissors? What do you want to do? Do you want to fight it out?
He offered up his seat first. I'm just saying.
I mean, I'll stay on if you want to, if you want to drop that.
I'm okay, all right. Stephen, it's all you. All right. Are you taking these notes? Do I have to write these down? Okay. All right. Next up, we have SIC Bank Subcommittee. We currently have Melissa Plowman. Joan Newhouse was on it and has since, obviously, she's not on it any longer. Melissa, will you just talk us through the time commitment?
Yes, and I'm having a complete like, oh! Because I was supposed to be in a SIC Bank meeting today, and I didn't show up. Sorry, Andrea. Oh, goodness.
Well, you're fired.
I'd like to stay on the SIC Bank Subcommittee, but I might be fired.
So you'd like to stay?
It is not a big-time commitment at all. But I feel like I'm just starting to understand the process. I don't feel like it's good to, to leave that right now.
Oh, my gosh, I can't wait. Ask a question. Not to digress, you need two reps, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask you, is this something that could be done in Zoom? I have to say that I'm struggling with the time that a lot of these committees meet, because I don't work in a position that's flexible any longer. I didn't know if there was like a Zoom way of kind of participating. Thoughts?
That's always, are you specifically asking about SIC Bank? That's always Zoom, and it's usually very quick.
All right, I don't mind being the second person then.
Great.
If I could, I could break it.
No one?
I don't mean to interrupt that, but in general, with some of the things that come later, and I certainly saw some of the time of day for some of the negotiations and such things, any of them that involve daytime activities, if they happen to be available via Zoom or similar, if you could just mention that as we go through, just it'll help me understand. Because being here during the afternoon is sometimes challenging or frequently challenging, but Zoom might be more accommodable, possible.
All right, thanks so much. All right, so we're good with SIC Bank. Tracy, we're good?
Yep.
All right. Next, we have superintendent evaluation subcommittee. Right now, I am on that, Jay is on that, Joe was, so we do have a spot there. I would like to, I think it's pretty, it's typical for the chair to remain on that, so I, and I'd like to remain on it anyhow. Jay?
Yeah, I, I'd like, I'd like to stay on too, but if there's somebody else who is, oh, I believe, there's two other people, there's two, if there's two other people who are
Two people who are gonna.
dying to get on there.
I'm happy to jump on to that if you want.
I would be, too.
Oh, my goodness, everyone wants to evaluate. We do now.
So if there's, I can, I can.
Well, I think it might be helpful to have you stay, because you've done it with me before, and then, David, have you done it?
I haven't.
I mean, you might do it. I don't, I mean, I don't know. When I, you might want to do it for a time through so you can see how it all works. And since Stephen is just doing this for the first time, and then Melissa, this will be your first full, that maybe that makes sense?
Yeah.
I don't know.
And then maybe next year, there can be further evaluations, yeah.
Is that, is that okay?
Yeah.
Is it, yeah?
I know, that's what I'm saying.
All right, so that's.
Be done by then with that, with that topic.
Thank you. Sorry, she's.
Ben, Jay, David?
Next, we have the rep to the WEF Board of Directors. That is currently Melissa Plowman. She's been doing an excellent job.
I would like to continue with that, yeah.
She feels that you're just kind of getting.
And I haven't missed one of those meetings.
Well, you were here for one yesterday.
In fact, I showed up for one that was canceled.
That counts double.
I was like, what are you doing here? And she's like, I'm here for a WEF meeting, but I didn't check my email, and it's canceled. All right, so is that okay if everyone, if Melissa stays as our WEF representative?
I give her my blessings, yes.
All right, perfect. Next, we have the Wellness Advisory Committee. And so MJ, you have been on that.
So I absolutely love this committee, but I can't, it's not a virtual format, and it breaks my heart, but I just, I haven't been able to attend more than just one this year. And it's just, it's not fair, because they're doing wonderful things that benefit all of our schools. And I, I just, it's just a conflict.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there someone else who wanted to do wellness? Was that one of yours, Melissa?
I did want to, but that time is gonna, is it like 3:00?
Yeah. 3:15.
It's in person.
And that's a tricky time for you.
And that's, that's, that's the only reason why I, I'm giving it up, because it's a five, I got to say, it's an absolute dynamic and fabulous committee. But it's just, it's just not fair for, for me not to be able to, that's, that's my thing.
Is it just once a month?
I think it's, they meet quarterly, once every three months.
And it's always in person?
It's once, so it's, oh, so it's four times a year?
About that, yes.
That's what. Do you handle that, Melissa? I know that's not a good time for you. It's not a good, I don't think it's, it's a struggle for all of us. That time is just.
The virtual aspect would be a game changer, because I could jump in and then.
If it was virtual, I don't think I'd give it up. But it truly is, some of the.
Do you want to, I mean, does it make sense to?
MJ, is there a particular day of the week that it meets?
It's Wednesdays.
Typically, Wednesdays, yeah, which is a clinic day for me, which I.
Do you want to kind of both be there and then maybe do two and two? Does that make sense? It's a little bit less. Let me try that.
And alternate?
It might, my schedule may look, I mean, I'll still have the same time commitment being in Boston, but maybe a little more flexible, because I know the provider I support, his schedule will be changing, so that might offer me some flexibility.
Well, why don't we try it and see how it is? And then if it's not working, then let us know, and we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right.
Great idea, thank you.
No problem.
Leadership.
I know.
We have the School Committee Representative to CPAC. That was Joe. She was very active. I know you're very, you're very interested in that?
I am interested in that.
David has been an alternate. I think David was, you were not the alternate at one point, right?
I did it for two years. I was the rep for two years.
So I know Melissa has some interest in that. Anybody else? Would someone else like to serve as the alternate to Melissa? Do you want to remain the alternate?
Happy to be the alternate.
Okay. Are you, are you comfortable with that? Okay. All right. The next one, it says chairperson, but it's really not, but whatever, it's fine. We'll leave it as is. Well, it's really you, right? I mean, like, the executive session minutes, I feel like is actually.
It's different, you know, I don't know why it keeps coming up, because it's the chair that usually drives that with the superintendent. So for it to be, continue to be.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it is technically a subcommittee per se, but I mean, I don't know what, we all review and we all approve it, but I guess for accuracy perhaps.
All right, we'll, we'll leave it as is. School Committee Legislative Representatives, we have MJ and Jesse. They were co-representatives.
I've not contributed much to MJ in this regard over the years, but I'm still interested in it unless anybody desperately wants it. I'm willing to keep pretending to work with MJ to do it. And I don't mean that to be.
And I will carry Jesse. I'm just kidding.
All right, so that, there's no change there. Are we good?
Looks like we're good there.
All right. School Committee Handbook.
Love you, Jesse. I'd like to.
You want us to continue?
I'd like to, yeah.
All right, so that's MJ, David, and Jay. And there's not usually a ton in there, but it's a, it's a revision process each year, is that?
I think, well, what happens, I think we were in midway, we were reviewing it after several years, and we, we were midway maybe a year before the pandemic, and then it just.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, this would be something that I think, summer work.
For a couple of years.
It's like policy.
I think, yeah, I think this would be more, and I'd like to kind of just finish the last part of it.
Okay.
Over the summer.
Yeah, that's great. So MJ, David, Jay, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, sure, I'm just staying on. And how many people you think are sticking with it right now on WZTV?
Contract Negotiation Team with WTA, that has been MJ and David. It would be my recommendation that we, they continue in that role. Is that, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, we'll see it through, too. It's for a conclusion.
Committee to Recommend Owners Project Manager. Wait, what is, we did that already, didn't we?
So.
But now there's a town, but there's still.
You had still recommend an owner's project manager, but now it's just the town hall.
Now it's just the town hall, okay, that's what I thought. So now, yeah, you can remove the project manager.
There you go.
And that has been Jesse.
How often do you, how often does that meet?
Every other Wednesday.
Oh, that's frequent.
It's every Wednesday that isn't this meeting.
Yeah.
But it's at night, so it's easy for me to make those ones, and I get to hang out with Paul, so.
And another person can go to if someone else is interested. Stephen, if you want to join that, you can as well.
Yeah.
Great.
Mainly still I can hang out with Paul, too.
Representative to MSBA Wildwood School Building Committee, we have David, Melissa is an alternate, and MJ is an alternate. Thoughts on that?
I'm, well, I'm happy, I'm happy to, but if someone else would like to get a little deeper into the MSBA.
It'll start up probably later June, July, definitely.
And what are the, what's the timing on that typically?
I think, I think they've been evening meetings, but they've kind of just been whenever everyone's been available.
Once a feasibility study is done, and it's an all-product design, stuff like that. So it'll be a little bit of work coming up, I think.
Probably monthly, would you guess? Yeah, starting in the summer.
Is there a special town meeting this November for one of these projects?
The town hall.
Tentatively for both.
Of both, okay. So I imagine it would. I don't know.
I mean, if one of the, also, also Melissa would want to.
Just the town hall.
Town hall. Switch from, from alternate to the primary rep, that's, that's fine with me.
I don't care. I usually go anyway. I don't know, I thought I was supposed to.
Super alternate.
There you go.
All right, so we'll keep that as is and, I mean, other, and, like, I could attend if I, right? If I tell you I'm attending?
Well, you can attend, it's not our meeting.
Right.
So there's no quorum in.
So people can attend, I think it's just good to make sure Tracy has, gets a heads up that other people are attending. If someone wants to go, I mean, we don't even get, I don't even know when those are, to be honest, so.
It's usually the, when they're supported, like if it's specifically with the MSBA coordinators or representatives, they're virtual and the invitations are typically sent to the folks that have signed up to be on the committee.
Okay, all right.
If we did, if we keep it the same, we're fine, but there is a documentation that we have to file with MSBA, who's on this committee, you know, both towns.
We have to amend that anyway, actually.
All right. All right, so we'll keep it, we'll keep it as is, is that all right? Okay. All right, we have the school committee rep to the negotiations for the admin assistance. And I am doing that one. And Jesse is doing the ed assistance, is that correct?
Yes, we're going to do them together and then there was a schedule conflict, so we decided to just each do.
Divide and conquer. Yep, okay. Next we have the family communication relations, which is really in a lot of ways become, not solely, but I would say, one of a partnership with PAWS. Maybe we could rename it PAWS Partnership Liaison. I would love to remain on that, but I don't want to take that away from anybody if they want to do that.
Joe's spot is open.
Joe's spot is open.
I would be interested in that if nobody else is.
Melissa? MJ, you'll stay as the alternate, all right? And we have the equity subcommittee, we have Jay, I'm on that. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Just on the communication relations one.
Yeah.
So I just have Jenna and Melissa and Jay coming off.
And Jay's, oh, I think he's staying on, you stay?
I could stay on, I mean, listen, I mean, MJ, unless MJ wants to switch places with me.
My time commitments.
Okay.
Thank you though, Jay.
I'll stay.
Are you feeling like you can step away?
I mean, if there's somebody else who wants it, I'm not, I'm, I'm okay with, with not being on there, but I do. Does anybody else want to be on?
You're being ambiguous.
Do you want to be off?
No, I don't. But if other people want to be on, then I will.
Okay, we're going to keep it as is, all right. Equity, we've got Jay, I'm on that and David is on that. I'd love to remain on it, but I know I've been on it for some time, so if someone wants my spot, then I will cry my way off. Jay, you're going to, you're.
I would like to, I'd pretty much like to stay.
Central and organizing. Organizer, I guess you could be the chair, can't we just call you chair?
Be the de facto chair of the committee anyways?
The senior member is supposed to be the.
Super organizer.
Not necessarily, I guess not, that's so funny. Well, Jay will remain the organizer, David?
I mean, I've been there from the beginning too and would, I suppose, generally like to stay, but.
Ooh, this is going to be interesting. Who else wants our spots?
I would be interested, but I feel like I'd be stepping on a whole lot of toes over there.
Ooh, I don't know. David, you're so busy.
She's trying to kind of kick me off.
I just can't see, we're like in the middle of like so many things, I can't like see myself being like, okay.
Again, if, if, if it's appropriate for you guys to continue for this, this year, then I'm fine with that as well.
Sure, do you want to be an alternate?
Yeah, we could be an alternate.
Can I, I might even aspire to be a super alternate someday.
I can teach you.
Please. All trainings at Starbucks, thank you.
All right, we've got nurses, so this is where, oh, Jesse, you're on this one too?
I went to the first meeting and then we didn't meet for a long time.
Oh, I see.
Every proposed meeting, I was already scheduled for something, so.
So Jay, you can't, I mean, really, the timing just does not work.
It's, it's, it's not going to work out for me.
The negotiator is just really hard.
Horrible.
Really, really difficult.
I have to say, I'm very grateful to the WTA for being so accommodating and meeting later in the afternoon.
Does make a big difference, for sure. Okay, so Jay, we're going to take you, you're going to take yourself off of that. Jesse, can you do that or not really?
I don't think so.
No.
I mean, I can look at some of the meetings that are scheduled and see, but.
Two thirty?
When is this starting, Paul? Or I know it started, but when?
Nineteenth, January thirty first.
The nineteenth of May. So the next meeting is Thursday, the nineteenth.
Thursday.
Right after school, three, three-ish.
It's two thirty o'clock, it's three o'clock.
So three o'clock, I mean, two thirty if you can, three o'clock.
Naturally in person.
I could probably cover that meeting.
Could you?
On the nineteenth.
All right, why don't we, why don't we put David and put me there? And then we'll just do what we can do. We'll go when we can and we'll keep each.
Super alternate.
Yeah, we'll go back and we'll do what we can do. It's hard, there's just so many going on right now, so it's just so tricky with multiples, I just can't.
If you're in a, like, if you're in a situation and neither of you can go, can anyone else from the committee jump in or no? Has to be an identified.
No, I think you could, I mean, the only issue, you wouldn't have the background and like the, however things transpire to that point, that'd be the only thing that would be missing, but.
I mean, I think it's really important to have a representative there. If so, if we can't go and someone else can go, then I think that that's helpful. Okay. As opposed to not having anyone there, but. And I did call, I have called into a couple. It's not ideal, but Paul's pretty accommodating.
Yes, very, very.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it works and that's, it hasn't been great because you don't really, it's, you're calling in and you're in a room and everyone's talking, you know, but it's, but you're there, at least you're there. I feel like that's kind of that, an important role that we serve, so, okay. And then finally, there is a proposal from quite a few of you, maybe all of you. Different ways of, of a new subcommittee, because we don't have enough and we wanted more. So now we're adding another subcommittee, but it's a budget subcommittee. And I do think that this is, is really, really important and I think it's a great move. I don't know exactly what it will entail, but my vision is that it would be an opportunity to kind of dive more deeply into the budget and understand it and be able to come back to the full committee and share. But also maybe an opportunity for us to collaborate with other town committees, perhaps, where we could be on, kind of share our story and be on the same page before we get to sort of those presentations. So that is, that's, I think, the hope that many of you have expressed and we have conveyed to Dr. Brand.
Well, the question I would have is, is would it be appropriate for people on that committee, not as spokespeople for the school committee, but as representatives to gather feedback, to go to finance committee meetings whenever the school was on their agenda?
We can't speak on behalf of the board.
That's what I'm saying, we wouldn't be there to speak on behalf of, but to hear their concerns and to be able to bring them back. And so whenever they have it as an agenda item, we go as part of that committee. Because that way we know earlier, sooner and can then, through the right, through the appropriate channels, provide the level of feedback and support they need.
I don't think, I mean, I think, I think that, yeah, I mean, I think what I would love would be for maybe to have a member of FinCon on the committee and then say to us, hey, you should come to this next committee, like, as opposed to, you know, like, but yeah, I think something like that would be great where there was this like two-way.
Exactly, because I think there's a lot of, that's changed with school spending and expenditures and funding that I think would be beneficial for finance committee to at least consider in their, you know, appropriations.
Better, just better collaboration and understanding, I mean, just a deeper under, I mean, even for some of us who have been doing budget a long time and then when new people come on and then to, to see the budget through, through new members is always a good reminder to me about just how complex and complicated it is. And I think to spend some time really thinking through some of that stuff throughout the year as opposed to just at those particular meetings would be great for us as a committee. And then if we can use that to help with the collaboration, I think that would be, just, it's a win, right?
I think a budget subcommittee would also be helpful to be there a little bit earlier in the budgeting process.
Yeah.
And to both sort of bring back and sort of in, in both directions, convey some of the budgeting thinking between, you know, between, you know, Paul and Dr. Brand and so forth, as the budgets develop, but also so that the school committee can sort of have our, a little bit of input earlier into the process.
Yeah. Well, I would love to, I guess, I feel like sometimes we are just so late to the game, but I want to sort of understand more deep, like, how, wait, is this really aligned to our strategic, how is this aligned to our strategic plan? I was thinking that, and I just don't feel like we always have that opportunity because it is sort of at the very end, or to understand more deeply what the principals' budgets look like, what they're asking for. I would just love to understand that a little bit more, so.
Last piece was, or the second, next piece for me was, was Dr. Brand, you mentioned yourself in some of the conversations that were had before the vote at the town meeting, that just the, the process of developing the budget as enrollment does evolve and, and coming up with the clear vision of the budget is this for these reasons and it's moving up, down and sideways for these reasons, that level of, of presentation to the wider town is an important part of getting support for the budget. So I think that's an important part of that work.
Okay, great, so we all agree. So yes, do we have to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
That we establish a finance and budget subcommittee.
Great, is there a second? Mr. Fenely, all in favor? It's unanimous, yay, another subcommittee. Who wants to be on it?
I nominate you.
I nominate.
You want to be on it?
Yes.
Yes, I could tell.
I'm interested as well.
All right.
Just to let you know, Steve, that the uniform is.
I'm, I'm interested, but I don't want to take it away from someone else, so I'm happy to do it. Okay.
Nobody's fighting you.
No, no, wait.
I did say finance and bu, and budget because then we can call it the Fab Committee.
Another acronym.
I want to be a, the super alternate on the Fab Committee. All right, my friends, I'm way off my timestamps, Mr. Fenely, I'm not good. I just looked and I actually thought it said eight fifty and I'm like, oh, good, I'm right on time. And I was like, it's not eight fifty. All right, correspondence, Mrs. Burns. Okay. Future school committee dates and other notable items, May twentieth and twenty first. Here at the high school, we have the Performance of Chicago. May twenty fourth is the National Honor Society event, seven PM. Thank you for those of you who have signed up to attend. May twenty fifth, we have our regular session meeting here at seven o'clock. June third is scholarship night, June fifth is graduation and June eighth is our regular session meeting with our, while we honor our.
Retires.
Retires, okay, great. And I think that's it unless someone else has anything else to share. It's been a great week in Wilmington Public Schools, a lot of great stuff going on. So keep sending out those messages and I see lots of tweets from, from teachers and from you, so keep spreading the good news. Anything else? All right, a motion to adjourn?
You move to adjourn?
A second, thank you, Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you, good night.